Good morning, everybody. Welcome, public council chambers, a full house. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at nine thirty AM on November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Council, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Mayor Ireland.
Not an addition, but I propose a change in the in the absence of objection from anyone on council. I might suggest that we move agenda item six ahead of agenda item five. Just out of a courtesy to Sergeant Bedazy, who is here on a piece of correspondence. I mean, it will take a few minutes, I'm sure. But I think it would be appropriate to release Sergeant Bedazy to police work rather than sit through all of the delegations, which I think are going to take at least an hour.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Is there any objection to the table? Thank you for that. May I please get a motion to approve the agenda amended? Counselor Melnick. All in favor? And the agenda is amended. Counsel, you also have in front of you the committee of the whole minutes from October twenty-fourth. Is there any business arising from those minutes? I see no hands. We will move on then to a new item in order. Sergeant Bedazy is here from the Jasper Police Force, if you wanted to. Join us. Good morning, Sergeant Bedazy.
Good morning, Council. I'm here to field questions. You do have a copy of our Q two report or quarter report for my second quarter for this fiscal year. I'm here to field questions if there are any.
Thank you, Sergeant Bedazy. Turning to council, see if there are any questions or comments. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And thank you, Sergeant Bedazy. Appreciate the the report I'm getting. Comfortable now with the format that you're required to present it in. Overall, it looks very positive. I I see primarily decreases in in the crime statistics, which is a good thing. I take it that that is something that you're also aware of, and I credit your yourself and your detachment members for that. Are there any concerns specific to our community that that you have at present?
Nothing that has presented itself as problematic or a pattern. We've had, given the time of year when this report was based on. We did have an influx of visitation, and we did have an influx of some crime types that was traveling through our community. We did have a group that came in and temporarily set up as part of their employment. But what happened thereafter was two weeks, a week and a half of a steady property-related crime event that we took the necessary. Once we started paying attention to the calls for service, we came up with a plan and we addressed it. So that was just a snapshot in time, and persons were held accountable. The matter is before court right now, so I can't really speak to a lot of the details. And since that time, we have noticed a steady decline in property-related crimes.
Oh, thank you for that. Just to confirm, I think I've spoken to you privately, but we're in public now. So I'd just like to repeat that council had an opportunity to meet with K Division in late September when we're at the Alberta Municipalities Conference in Edmonton. And we were really happy on that occasion to credit you and and your detachment for the for the great work that you do here. We're happy to see that you are fully staffed right now. We encourage K Division to make sure that that continues to happen and to look at opportunities to maybe enhance the detachment on the basis that you're required to police a lot more than our small community, particularly in the summertime. So you're responsible for policing perhaps twenty-five thousand people in the in the Three Belly Confluence, which is a stretch for a detachment designed to serve about five thousand people. So we're very impressed with the work you do, and we are happy to pass that along to K Division. We have chins.
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you for that. Your worship, council. I much appreciate it. I can say that we do have a wonderful staff at the detachment. We have moments where the calls for service is ramped up. However, we with the support of council and our Parks Canada also, we do have that law enforcement component. We work closely together and and our local EMS partners, fire department, the hospital staff. It's a I always say I'm in my I'm heading into my thirtieth year of emergency services, and it's a wonderful team of emergency services and personnel that we have here in our wonderful community.
Counselor Waxer.
Thank you, Sergeant Bedazy. I also wanted to express appreciation for the work that you do in the area of community connection. I think that's a very important piece of leasing, and I appreciate the extensive effort you put into you and your team put into ensuring that that occurs.
Sergeant Watson, watch.
I echo Counselor Waxer's sentiments from everything from candidate to bike safety at the schools. We absolutely appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor Demora.
Thank you very much for the report again. It's also adjusted to this, so it's it's a little easier to understand and I can say so. Appreciate that. Just I know that we might be usually because of the the holiday season Jasper goes through a different type of flux of visitation. What types of challenges are you going to see over the next month or so?
Historically, we've noticed noted an increase given the different weather changes. We've noticed an increase in driving-related offenses. Similar to what we have in summer, however, our collisions are increasing in the winter months. We do notice that. We have increased calls for service as it pertains to some fallout from sort of that that time of the season where persons tend to overindulge, I would say. So we do have increases of that. It's not an epidemic by any means, but we do have people coming to the community for various reasons. And we we know an increase in some impaired driving, possibly persons' crimes as far as assaults and so forth, but nothing that is presents itself that is concerning. It's just a pattern that has been observed in the past years.
Thank you. It was I don't know if you're ready for that one, and I apologize if I was putting you on the spot because it's not part of your reporting. But you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, the the season is changing a bit here, and people are going to be celebrating. So, you know, sometimes it's just to to keep it in the back of people's minds, and you your career has been doing a great job summer and winter. And and I'm just honored to have your your team here in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any other comments from council? Need a motion to accept the report for information? Counselor Melnick, like to make that motion to accept the report for information?
Yes.
All in favor? That is accepted. Thank you very much, Sergeant Bedazy, for taking time out of your day to join us in council chambers.
Thank you, Council. Much appreciated.
Let me get back at it. Okay, we're going to be moving to agenda item five, delegations. We have Tourism Passports here to present their stewardship plan. Brooklyn Rushden, James Jackson, and Tyler Tyler Riopel. I don't think Mr. Jackson is scared of the mic.
He's private.
Thank you for joining us today.
Excellent. Well, your worship, council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. I want to acknowledge and and thank you also for your patience as we ran into a bit of a scheduling conflict two weeks ago. So appreciate being included on the agenda today as well as for the opportunity to make a brief moment related to the ongoing budget deliberations at the end of this presentation. But I'm joined today with my colleague Tyler Riopel, our Director of Destination Development, and our colleague Brooklyn Rushden, our Destination Stewardship Strategist, who is the lead on this project. So I really want to open with a collaborative tone that is the purpose for this document's creation. The the background of that collaboration goes way back in COVID. And if you'll recall, this this council convened a Economic Recovery Task Force, which tackled everything, I feel like, or addressed everything, deliberated everything. And one of the recommendations coming out of that task force was the development of a comprehensive destination development plan, or is how we were framing it at the time. And as per sort of the the role that that committee played is everybody sort of took a piece of work or was assigned a piece of work given their various portfolios. And this piece landed on our lap, although it ended up being a very, very collaborative piece of work. And so we're here today to report on that work and ask you for an endorsement of the plan such that we can continue to work with administration moving forward on what has become fifty-plus actionable initiatives that will come out of the plan. I I also want to preface the the presentation with the fact that this is an ambitious plan, fifty-four objectives, or actionable initiatives are very ambitious, some of which are very pervasive, others are quite small. And the key, though, is and the underlying value that I think we've all collaborated on together is that if we don't aim high, then these issues won't be addressed in a wholesome manner. And so I'll be the first one to acknowledge that if if we get all of these fifty-four things done in ten years, that would be a resounding success. The likelihood of that is is maybe a little bit low. But again, this is about aiming high and doing what's best for the for the destination at large. So the document itself and the project is about optimizing Jasper's visitor economy. It's a ten-year roadmap because because Jasper needs to be a vibrant, resilient, and regenerative destination for tourism to ever reach its full potential. And acknowledging that within the municipal council's strategic priorities, relationships are a core component. We want to acknowledge that that's the core of this this project. It's a it's a partnership in every in every sense of the word. But we really want this document to institutionalize collaboration within the destination, not only within Tours in Jasper, within the municipality, within our colleagues from from Parks Canada and the business community residents at large. And so that's really the purpose of this document is to address the interstitial issues, the issues that live between us in a collaborative manner. So the the steering committee that everyone sees before them had representatives from the municipality, Parks Canada, small business owners, large employers, residents, and commercial property owners. We also utilized consultant from a global consultant to help facilitate the project MMGY Next Factor, who stewarded the project and has such acknowledged the project as a as a global leader, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So we kick things off in two thousand and twenty-one. As I mentioned, after the Economic Recovery Task Force, we engaged a resident sentiment study, which had over seven hundred residents respond to it. Ultimately, we had over eight hundred engagements in the project in total. The steering committee worked very collaboratively over two thousand and twenty-two and a large portion of two thousand and twenty-three. As we all know, many of these projects and that are collaborative in nature take time. And I was saying before that this is one of those projects where I'm actually really glad we took our time because the end product is considerably better with the feedback from all of our all of our partners. We refined it over the summer, and then finalization and approval happened on our end of the things with our board approving it on October fourteenth. As an FYI, also, we currently have what will become an annual resident sentiment survey out in market, and we already have over four hundred and fifty responses for it. So we'll continue to do that work moving forward and obviously work with not only the municipality, but all of our stakeholders on the findings of that report. So as we look ahead, we need to understand, you know, now that we have the context of how we got here, we need to understand what's next. And so this stewardship project really has three phases. Throughout the process, we realized that there are different stakeholders who would need to assume different leadership positions, and there needs to be more work done in assessing the current landscape. And so phase two will begin shortly and really be about assessment and applying a LEAF model. And by LEAF, I mean lead, enable, influence, and follow. So really, what are the what are the current dynamics at play? Who is taking the lead on any given project? Housing, for instance, is one where Tourism Jasper will probably take a supportive role, and the municipality and others will take the lead. But obviously, we want to share our support for an initiative like housing. Housing also has a lot of different facets and is well on its way. So that's an example of one that the project actually might be a little bit behind the actual actual initiative. But phase two is really about collectively assessing the current state of each initiative, developing and applying key performance metrics, and then applying, like I mentioned, leadership roles. And again, this underscores that in the nature of collaboration. And then as we enter into two thousand and twenty-four, we'll really start working on implementation of those initiatives. So quickly, the oh, this is just another overview of constituents consulted. But we we had eleven key takeaways based on those eight hundred consultations. And so I'll take you quickly through what we heard. Effectively, we heard loud and clear that we need to keep Jasper real. We need to keep Jasper Jasper. I think we all understand that. But residents also shared that year-round economic activity is important. Air access and regional access into the destination, and then mobility within the destination are all very, very important. And so it's important to acknowledge through our conversations that we have to think about transportation and access to the destination outside of our destination because they're connected. The town site needs some love. We heard that loud and clear through the process. Housing continues to be an issue around affordability and inventory. Workforce continuity is obviously a challenge, although with international borders and visa regulations being expedited, that has alleviated some of the compression. Product development will be required to grow. And the community really cares about their values being represented. And so by way of governance and policy, sustainability, and equity, diversity, inclusion, all of these were included in our thinking as we started to build the plan. But the eleven key takeaways were refined were refined such that we really tried to convey and incorporate the values of residents within the plan. And so ultimately, our feed the feedback of residents told us that we need to focus on attracting a values-aligned visitor to Jasper. And a values-aligned visitor is someone defined as people who embrace local culture and customs, visit outside the traveling peak season, stay in the destination longer, explore beyond the main attractions, travel more sustainably, and repeat their visitation. And so we, to sum that up, we want to invite people who are going to give more to the destination than they take away, that are going to have a regenerative approach. And so from the engagement process, we distilled the eleven key takeaways into five community priorities that are linked to the strategic goals that I'll get into in a second and form the foundation of the plan. Ultimately, the consultation engaged nearly twenty percent of Jasper residents, and their feedback, in our opinion, is irrefutable. And so when distilled down, the feedback said five things. Jasperites want to help make the National Park a more dynamic place to live, work, and learn and visit. Jasperites believe that all residents should have intangible, or sorry, tangible opportunities to create a better life for themselves. Jasperites are eager to help protect the natural environment and local wildlife. Jasperites are more evenly distributed or want more evenly distributed year-round economic activity to support their businesses and livelihoods. And finally, Jasperites want government and business to share their values. And so what we did, as you can see here, is just translate those priorities into strategic goals, which built out what we're calling the five P matrix. And so the five P matrix is the core of this plan. It puts the place around everything else. It is the product. Jasper is the product. And when we say Jasper, we're using Jasper in the the most broad sense, what we all interpreted as not the park, not the town, but the destination, everything within it. And so, however, to have a fully optimized place and destination, we can't ignore the other four pillars. And so it's important to note that the matrix the matrix isn't a hierarchy, but it's it's a a way of comprehending all of these components equally. And so without addressing people, planet, prosperity, and policy, we don't have an optimized destination. And so it's really acknowledging that all of these coming together will create sort of this destination of the future that generates economic resiliency for everybody. And so the framework, the plan itself, looks something like this. It has five strategic goals. It has intended outcomes at a high level for those strategic goals. There's thirty-one of them. Each goal has objectives, sixteen in total, and each objective has subsequent actionable initiatives, fifty-four in total. We did not include performance-based metrics yet because they need to be developed at a deeper level throughout the engagement process, and we will do that with our partners as we start to build this out. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to Tyler to provide a very quick overview of the fifty-four actionable initiatives.
Thanks for that. It's also for the sake of time, I'm not going to go into great detail on fifty-four. All the information is in the packages that you have in front of you. But I will just talk at a high level of each one of the goals and and what the outcomes are that we're looking for there. So starting with goal number one, this is the place goal. This is, as James just said, this is that this reference that Jasper is the is the place, is the product. And so what we're really looking at is improving the experience for everyone who lives, works, and plays in Jasper. The connotation of place is indeed linked to this notion of development. So it's really about sustainable place development, ensuring our community is thriving, and that we can leverage the visitor economy to improve the destination overall. So the objectives in here that we're seeing, we're seeing things around that visitor experience, improving visitor experience through access and mobility. We're looking at quality of quality of life things, quality of product, services, infrastructure, whether that's multimodal transport, which we all agree would be good for everyone as well as the visitor. Improve civic pride through vibrancy initiatives, walkability, place-making, and then, of course, this notion of consistent year-round revenue and income, weatherproofing or weather-resistant experiences, new market segments and development through the channels where we need it. Number two is this focus on people, the idea that if we take care of Jasper residents, Jasper residents will take care of our visitors. And so this is really talking about taking care of those who live in in Jasper, but also those who have strong connections to Jasper and making sure that there's equitable opportunities for the diversity that exists within our community. So our objectives through here are linked again to some diverse housing opportunities, improved livability and affordability. There's pieces here on that resident sentiment and the monitor that we're we doing on an ongoing basis, but really more about resident engagement and communications overall. A true focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, workforce attraction and retention, both in domestic and international markets. And then progress on the truth and reconciliation efforts and how they relate to our community. And so a lot of that is through collaborations that exist and are ongoing. A lot of that is through just listening to understand. And then a lot of that is creating space to understand where we go. That's a bit of a headier one that we know will take a lot more time. Number three is the goal linked to planet. Really protecting the ecological the ecological integrity of Jasper National Park is a shared goal for everyone, with Parks obviously taking the big lead on that one. But we know that we wouldn't have this place to live, this beautiful place to call home, if it wasn't for that stewardship that already exists. So what we're trying to do is recognize that growth in the tourism industry and activity is necessary, but environmental change needs to happen responsibly and sustainably, or that that growth needs to happen responsibly and sustainably. It's a complex one, and the stewardship stewardship plan, tourism, environmental, ecological stewardship all have to work together. But for the purpose of this plan, it's really on supporting the future and current integrity of the area overall. So a lot, lot of points here and ideas here around tourism development and the evolution through the lens of regenerative tourism, reducing tourism-related impacts as it might relate to things like energy consumption, emissions, water usage. A lot of education and communication opportunities around climate change here, but the core idea is that we can be leaders as a destination, not only through our words, but also through our actions. Moving on to number four, prosperity. Pretty clear, I think. We've we have a lot of understanding of this around a lot of different tables, but really, for the economic well-being of Jasper, this is looking at how the dollar spent in the community can help contribute to prosperity overall of the community. So this was back to that notion before of taking care of visitors and residents and having responsible growth where the growth is needed. So whether that's seasonality, whether that's need periods, whether that's product gaps. The notion that was previously mentioned about values-lined visitor loyalty, getting the right people here that share our same values as our community is key. And really, that year-round business revenue consistency for local workforce. And then the probably the most ominous one is how do we use emerging technology to drive business and commerce forward? Ever-changing. I don't know that we'll ever pin that one down, so it's really staying on top of it or as in front of it as we can. And then finally, number five, the policy-related one. Obviously, due to our multi-jurisdictional governance structure in Jasper, we need to focus on alignment and inclusive decision-making, sustainable development, communal cohesion, the big picture, long-term stuff. So nothing new here, but obviously very important to make sure that's captured in the stewardship plan and it maintains focus on an ongoing basis. So alignment of the public-private and civic sectors, enhance livability and affordability through policy, improving conditions for local businesses and entrepreneurs. And there's specific mentions in here, obviously, around these these ideas of land use and planning and the tours of base community status conversations. So very quickly, there you go. There's five goals, sixteen objectives, and a really fast flyby of the fifty-four actionable initiatives. And as James said, it's a ten-year plan. It's we're we're going through an evaluation process right now where what we really want to do is start digging into those fifty-four initiatives, understanding who takes leadership roles, understanding timelines, what things have to happen before the other things, and and trying to set some priorities and understanding around how we're going to implement this thing. The work's just beginning on this, but we do have a dedicated resource on our team to make sure that this is being driven forward. There are things already in progress, obviously, the transit piece, some of those, the mobility things are in place. Workforce labor study, which we're going to hear about shortly, the DMF increase of three percent, some of those are happening. Some of our new priorities are going to link to strategic communications to align the business community and residents, some some more place-making strategies, some of these technology things through AI, and focusing on some new events to drive some key B periods. But ultimately, why we're here today. But ultimately, why we're here today, and the big piece here is our ask of council, and that is that we need your support to bring this thing full circle from what James had mentioned two years ago in this room, it was agreed that we would learn from the pandemic and implement something that would push the community forward. And so far, I think the project has done great work with a little bit of time. There's been a ton of support from the mayor and from Mr. Given on the development of this plan. And what we're looking for from council is to endorse the Jasper Destination Stewardship Plan and direct administration to actively engage in the implementation, including participating in discussions and working collaboratively with Tourism Jasper and the other partners on carrying out initiatives. Really, we want to engage with the team. We want to engage the people that are involved in the various projects, and we want to start having conversations with them about how to progress this document down the road. With that, I think we'll have more questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Reapaul, for your presentation this morning. I will turn to my council colleagues for questions or comments. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and thank you for the presentation. I read through the document before and appreciate the presentation. And I wonder if you might perhaps delve a little bit into some examples of where, how we would move forward from here, specifically going to goal one, with indoor, weather-resistant or resilient indoor experiences and enhancing indoor arts culture and heritage, and just some of your thoughts on that and how that might roll out with the community.
I'm going to queue this one up for Tyler to take, but I think we have a really great example of, just getting really specific, of product development in Jasper. Many years ago, our colleagues at Parks Canada facilitated the Dark Sky designation. And subsequent to that, because of that, we developed a festival. And then, after that, a private business stepped up to create a planetarium. And that's a perfect example of a product that aligns with everything we need because not only does it operate year-round, it's weather-resilient, although clouds are what they are, and the light in the summer is what it is, but it operates three sixty-five, and it operates after dinner. And so, it creates an opportunity to monetize a time of the evening that might not historically had an economic component to it. And so, that's just an example of a product that we would like to pursue further. I'm not saying we need another planetarium, but we would pursue a process a lot like that. I think Tyler has some ideas on other opportunities that you want to add in.
Yeah, you know, I don't, specific to other opportunities, I think a lot of them remain to be seen. What I would say is a big part of what we're calling Phase Two right now, but ultimately, the work that will happen is around this engagement. So it's really talking to community groups, whether it's JAG or other folks in the community that might represent the art and culture sector, and really understanding where those opportunities are and how we can support them, not only as Tourism Jasper, but also as a community, as the administration, as Parks Canada, and all pointing in the right direction. So that's part of the work that's ahead, really, is around these conversations, prioritizing things, realizing opportunities, and then making sure we continue to progress under a framework that allows us some direction and buy-in from multiple groups to say this is important. This is how we're looking forward.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Keller, MP.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and through you, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Jackson, improve access to Jasper. Prior to COVID, there was some talks with Yellowhead County about killing the airport units. And are those relations still intact and do you see it going better actually?
The short answer is we've got some work to do. As you'll recall, I think the mayor was intimately involved in the process of getting the Edson Airport CBSA designated. And that entire initiative was sort of predicated on the energy sector propping up any commercial routes into Edson. Obviously, in twenty, between twenty fourteen and sixteen, energy prices fell, and that financial model stopped being viable. Since then, things have evolved. As many of you know, Fairmont has done a great job in facilitating charters to land in Edson where never possible. But the short answer is we've got some work to do. I think between the county, the town of Edson, the town of Hinton, and the county of Yellowhead, West Yellowhead, a lot of people have changed roles. And so, we need to develop some relationships on that side, especially within the county, as it relates to the Hinton Jasper airfield as well, because we see that as maybe a bit more of a reasonable place to start with charters as opposed to going with larger aircraft into Edson. But that is definitely on the radar. And we have had discussions with Edmonton International Airport about how we can help facilitate some more volume to be driven that way. But as Tyler mentioned, this project is in its infancy, and that would be something we would definitely want to tackle because it is absolutely essential to facilitating year-round growth.
Thank you for that, Mr. Jackson. And I'm just wondering, is there still the used feedback at an ice field parkway committee that was kind of worked on with Parks Canada that's still intact or that was actually redeveloped?
I think it'll have to be redeveloped. AMPI, the Association of Mountain Parks Protection and Enjoyment, has really taken the lead on the Icefield Parkway file, and are trying to take a much more holistic approach to facilitating that. We acknowledge that it's a parkway and that it has thirty-eight slide paths and is extremely challenging operationally to run. But I think AMPI is well situated to create a lot of value for parks in terms of advocating that they receive more resources such that they can provide a more robust service, acknowledging that first and foremost, it's about safety and then accessibility after that. But AMPI will be, I think, one of the partners to really lead that. Tourism Jasper would be supportive in partnership with the chamber and the municipality. But there's a proposal in front of the AMPI board right now. And I know that there was work done maybe a decade ago about that parkway committee, but it seems to have become dormant. But AMPI's picked that back up. I didn't know it existed until AMPI picked up that file. So that's really great to see, and another example of some really great collaboration.
Thank you for that, Mr. Jackson.
Elsa Waxer.
I just wanted to express my appreciation for the collaborative approach in this. In my experience working from the big picture and working with all the players is critical to getting an excellent outcome. And I had a more specific question. A couple weeks ago, we had a presentation from the Historical Society around their new wildlife exhibit. And that strikes me as part of your, as a good fit with your sort of expanding indoor opportunities. And I wondered if there's been any work with Tourism Jasper on collaborating with the Historical Society on getting that project off the ground.
Thanks for that, Counselor Waxer. Yes, but I think those discussions need to proceed. The Historical Society and Museum is a member of Tourism Jasper, and so we work with them on a day-to-day basis. But I think being a bit more strategic about understanding their growth plans would be our next step, which would include the wildlife exhibit as well. I think Jasper is very fortunate to retain those assets within the community, and they did a lot of good at the Whistlers for as long as they were there. And now, with a different steward, I think we can really leverage that from, you know, by creating a great visitor experience. So that would be something that we would pursue for sure.
Thank you.
Want to say, DeWanna?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Thank you, Tourism Jasper, for being here today. I was interested in the comment about taking a regenerative approach to attracting like-minded visitors to our community, embracing, you know, what Jasper's all about and Jasper being the product. Globally, like, is there an attractive market for people that, you know, would like Jasper would be a right price point for to come and visit? Are there enough people that are interested? Is there a tourism base for that? Or is this something that you're going to develop?
I would say yes, there is. I think when it comes to regenerative tourism, sometimes we can default to thinking that is like climate-based sustainability tourism, and that's not necessarily the case, although that is a part of it. I'll try to stumble my way through this, and my colleague, Brooklyn, who's an absolute expert in this space, can help us out. But regenerative tourism really is just about visitors that contribute more than they take. So in terms of dollars, the dollars stay within the community because they value shopping local, they value human connection. And so, if they're staying in a home accommodation, for instance, they want to get to know the family. They want to know what sports that the kids play in the family. And they might contribute their bottles to the hockey team's bottle drive because those dollars all stay in the community. But then, they also might help friends of Jasper with a trail reclamation project because they value that. They're still staying, you know, in and paying for experiences that we price at the value that we believe the market can support. But it's really about the underlying values that the visitor has and that they want to contribute more than they take away. That's the underlying, I guess, thesis of regenerative tourism.
I appreciate that, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot either, but that was answered well, and I know that had a lot of layers to it, and thank you for answering all of that.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And thank you both and Brooke back there for the presentation and all the work on this. As you indicated, Mr. Given and I were part of the steering committee, so I have perhaps a bit of a bias on this matter. But I do want to express my appreciation for the work of the steering committee and the leadership of Tourism Jasper. And it's really good to know that something positive came out of COVID. And this is the product of that. And you were right, Mr. Jackson, to emphasize that the initiative for this came from the COVID Working Group or the task force that council appointed to look at this. And I'm really happy that there's been such a positive result. And I'm also really impressed with the emphasis on alignment and collaboration. Counselor Melnick gave you an opportunity to address that, but you missed, I think, with respect, a really obvious one that is so current, and that is the box modular addition to the arena. That is implementing the stewardship destination plan before we even have endorsed it. But that is an example of how collaboration and alignment can work and should work. It's a great example, so I take this opportunity to thank you for that. What I am most impressed with in this plan is the focus on people and in particular residents. The first goal is to improve the overall experience for visitors and residents, recognizing that we are all here to serve residents. And there is so much emphasis in this plan on community cohesion and social equity. And that, to me, is the selling feature of this plan and why I would personally vote to endorse it. It really does speak to, although it uses the word destination and Jasper in the broad sense is a destination for visitors, it is home to our residents, and the plan recognizes that everyone must share in the benefits, that we can't move forward with social division. We need that community cohesion. And the focus within the plan on those various elements is very impressive, including, for example, enhancing the capacity of the nonprofit sector. And Counselor Waxer mentioned that with respect to the museum, but to grow and strengthen as a community, we need other elements, including the nonprofit and the plan, the stewardship plan recognizes that. So for all of those reasons, I am certainly inclined to give it my endorsement. The question I have is not for you gentlemen. The question I have is for Mr. Given. In his, not in his role as a member of the steering committee, but as C O. The motion on our motion list speaks to receiving the presentation for information. The request is to endorse the plan and direct administration with respect to taking steps with regard to implementation. My question is, is there legal significance in the word endorsement? From a municipal perspective, what is the wording of the motion that we might consider? Because it has to be stronger than received for information, I think. If council was to pass a motion to endorse the plan, what meaning might that have from your perspective as Chief Administrative Launch?
Thanks very much, George. Yeah, on the motion list that's presented for council, you know, we certainly don't presume to know what the community groups are going to make in that presentation. So that's sort of a placeholder of, for any presentation, you can receive information. That's sort of tied off, but that really does apply no action. So my suggestion on this, if council wanted to add at least the symbolic weight of the municipality endorsing the plan, my suggestion would be that it should be, committee recommend council endorse the plan. And with respect to what sort of legal standing that might have, I don't believe it binds the municipality to implementing any specific part of it or binds any future council, any spending. I think it really is that symbolic acknowledgement from the municipality and from council that the plan is appropriate and useful for the community. I think the activating the municipality's participation in the plan is probably more of a direction to administration. So I see that there'd be sort of two parts, the symbolic step and then the action step. So recommending that council endorse the plan would be the symbolic. The action would probably be more in that direction to administration. So maybe directing administration to review the plan. I, as council probably does there, and I think as the delegation sort of reflected, there's a number of areas where the municipality is already active. And so, it might be a start, might be for administration to review the plan and identify areas where the municipality is already or where there are already municipal initiatives that support parts of the plan. And then, I think the question becomes, what's the ongoing structure of supporting and implementing the plan? And how many, how much municipal resources does council want to dedicate to that effort? I don't know whether right now, there's a, you know, the implementation plan committee will meet weekly on Thursdays at two P M. I don't know that they're that level yet. And that might be a separate request in the future because we don't know whether that would be administrative, political, combination of the both. So the first step might be to add a strategic weight to the municipality, saying, we endorse this. It's the right plan for our community. And then separately, directing administration to review the plan and sort of compare, contrast it with the current municipal actions that are underway or planned, so you can start to build an inventory of what we're doing and what we plan on doing that can help support the plan.
Mr. Jackson?
Just to support Mr. Given's comments, we've developed a pretty robust implementation plan already. And so, we envision our role within this plan is not as an owner, but of a steward. And so, we would really facilitate everything that Mr. Given had just spoken to. We acknowledge that this plan is oriented very much to the visitor economy as much as we acknowledge residents. And so, we feel that we have a duty of care to contribute administratively to that. And so, the team has built a really incredible plan. And so, we don't envision there being much administrative burden at a plan level, although as we start to tackle specific initiatives, an ad hoc meeting might be called, and the teams will work together. Is that a good summary of it?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the idea would be is that we also recognize that Tourism Jasper doesn't necessarily own some of these objectives. And so, some of that ownership falls into
some of these objectives, and so some of that ownership falls into other jurisdictions. And so administratively, there may be stuff. Transportation would probably be a a great example of something that has really led out of out of the municipalities' offices, not so much out of the tourism's offices. So that's part of this matrix that we have to build out is who's owning these things, and so that we're not necessarily trying to get anybody at the municipality. We're not directing their work, but we're understanding how their work feeds into this, because at the end of the day, it's a collaborative plan, and it's about everybody working together with a common vision within some common parameters. And being able to speak to these things collectively and report on them, but also not in getting each other's way. We want to make sure that there's action coming out of this and not just lots of conversation.
C A O, Given?
Yeah, just for council's consideration, another way for the municipality to, you know, support the plan, recognizing that it's intended to be a ten-year sort of life lifespan on the document or implementation plan. This is real, could be really good underlying material for council and the future council of the election as they develop their strategic plan. You know, when council identifies what its priorities are for the community, it would be worthwhile checking council's priorities against those of this plan. You know, and that's that's something that could happen on that sort of every four-year municipal council cycle. So again, it's another way that there's not necessarily a the municipality being the owner and holder of the plan and having specific implementation, but just ensuring that the municipality's actions and projects are aligned with the intent of the plan. So there's a couple of different ways that council could activate it.
Councillor Demora?
Yeah, I understand that there could be a lot of intermeshing of of plans too, because we'll be working with Parks Canada down the road on the on the community sustainability plan, so there are gonna be a lot of similar efforts, and and I like the whole concept behind this because there's a there's a whole cohesion here, and it starts with the with the residents, community members. So I'm all for supporting that. I do have a motion ready. Unless I just wanted to go ahead, but go ahead.
Well, thank you. I had in fact asked Mr. Given the question precisely to to move forward with the motion, but I I have noticed that our deputy mayor has yet to speak, so I I can hold off on the motion if that is going to happen.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I was also very happy to see the common thread sewn throughout the plan of taking care of residents, because as Mr. Raible said earlier, if we take care of residents, residents will take care of our visitors, providing residents a place to live and participate in community. I know that's a a thing that the municipality and council takes very seriously. Attending community conversations, just hearing what's what's going on with our with our residents. I had a question. One of my favorite things. In the plan, I see the wording enhanced pedestrian zones. I'm just wondering if you can elaborate on what that might look like.
I I think the notions here are really around walkability and safe spaces and and how we're using some of the pedestrian areas or other other public spaces to make sure that they're they're safe. And when we're in our busy peak season, obviously, there's a heavier demand on some of the pedestrian areas and and how we translate that across seasonality of the visitation and how we evolve things, whether it's lighting projects or infrastructure upgrades or or maintenance projects. So without sounding too much like reverting back to the same answer, I do see this as a a great example of where we we do some destination animation of vibrancy initiatives and how they cross over with some of the projects that municipality might have, whether that has to do with decor projects or that has to do with sidewalk upgrades and infrastructure. Obviously, those are conversations yet yet to come.
I'm just curious, does Tourism Jasper attend community conversations or have have in the past?
Yes, so I, as the community conversations initiative has grown, our participation has grown, and so we used to participate just in the the main one or the adult one, and we have representation on several now. So team members are participating. And our plan is to continue to to do that.
Councillor Waxer, you had your hand up earlier.
Yes, I wanted to make the comment that I really appreciated the idea of the inventory of services that municipality provides of creating that a list of inventory, because it struck 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 me as I was reading the this document that even in our recent budget deliberations, there were many aspects that would that came up that that really aligned with this. The concern about the beautifying of the community and ensuring there are sufficient grounds people. Also, the recognition that Jasper has increased number of transients coming through and ensuring that through the crisis response that both people are taken care of and and are not left sleeping in the doorways and all of that. So it struck me that already, even in our in our new budget deliberations, but also in much of what we do on a ru- routine basis that that complements this plan.
Thanks for that, Councillor Waxer. I agree. I think this plan is really about ongoing institutionalized collaboration, communication and engagement. However, I just want to be clear that we're by developing and then presenting this plan today, we're not necessarily at a initiative level asking municipal council at any level to pay for or invest in anything. I just want to make that really clear. There, the time will come to dig into alignment on an initiative and and tactical level, but today we're not asking for that, especially as it relates to the budget deliberations, which you'll you'll hear from me a little later about.
Councillor Demora?
Yeah, thank you for that. Because we're kind of in that budget zone, I've had this kind of abacus-like thing going on in my head when it comes to council priorities, the council priorities and services matrix that administration spent a lot of time developing for us and really aligning our priorities with their services and prioritizing, you know, what the needs of the the community are and you know, integrating the endorsement of this project, so to speak, will have some budgetary impacts on that, and I'm looking forward to discussions, like when we start talking about walkability in the town just at the surface. You know, pardon the pun there, but you know, even through the the winter time, there's gonna be some some initiatives that we're gonna have to take place that are going to have to take place at at the municipal level and with, you know, deeper council endorsement in in some ways, and and that's gonna have some tax dollars attached to it, and I'm looking forward to to working with Tourism Jasper more down the road on this, because there's a there are higher advocacy's that we can be working together on collaboratively to to help implement a lot of these initiatives. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Demora. I also meant to thank Tourism Jasper very deeply for the portable change rooms, and I can assure you that the Meyer Sports crew, all the kids love them, and that's the reason we you collaborated with them. Mayor Ireland, do the motion?
Almost. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Just before I make the motion, I I did have one question. And it went to Mr. Jackson's comments about not looking for investment just yet. And I was struck by a new phrase that falls under strategic goal number four. And it it references investments in new visitor information and experience infrastructure. And so I wonder whether you have a sense of what is encapsulated by experience infrastructure. Right now, a study that the municipality commissioned in concert with Bant and Canmore shows that thirty-two percent of our municipal expenditures go toward visitor-facing infrastructure. That's roads and parking and and all sorts of stuff. It's not typically seen as experience infrastructure, probably. It's not attractions in the regular sense. But visitors do experience Jasper from street level, curves and sidewalks and parking and everything else. And so when that phrase is used in the documents, can you tell me whether you were thinking of experience infrastructure in that broad sense or experience infrastructure in the sense of sort of the attractions that are more generally seen as experiential for visitors?
We were not alluding to that broader sense, as as you mentioned. As much as this plan is built on the the place, the destination encapsulates everything specific to that initiative. We're speaking about basically visitor information infrastructure as seen with Tourism Jasper's resident trailer guys, visitor experience center development that Tyler facilitated earlier this year. As is on the public record through a meeting at P D A C, our ambition is to work collaboratively with Parks Canada over the five-year term of our license of occupation for that current visitor experience center on a plan to address the old fire hall with Parks Canada. That's specifically what we're alluding to. And by visitor experience and not information, we're thinking of a more experiential type of facility and and type of visitor path to purchase. So not strictly human-to-human walking up with a desk separating them, pointing at a map, but a more robust larger vision for what providing visitor information and experiences can look like. But it is basically contained to what we traditionally think of as visitor information.
Thank you. I I do appreciate that refinement. So if I may, I am prepared to make a motion, and that motion will be that committee recommend council endorse the Jasper Destination Stewardship Plan and direct administration to review the plan to identify opportunities for the municipality of Jasper to participate in implementation of the plan and to return to committee with recommendations.
Just want to confirm administration, has that okay? There is a motion on the table? Is there any debate or a motion? Councillor Demora?
That was pretty darn close to what I was gonna say. Really, really close.
Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Mr. Jackson, you'd like to make a a statement on the budget?
Yeah, fir- first, I just want to thank council and administration very much. It was two years of of hard work, and I'm really, really excited for the next decade that will come. So thanks to Tyler and Brooklyn and Mr. Given's entire team, as well as the mayor's work on the council. But it was not intended to be the plan to to provide the following statement, but it, as I was taking notes throughout your your discussion, partnership and collaboration is really built on open and transparent communication. It builds and reinforces trust. And so with that context, I want to provide you with the following statement as it relates to your budget deliberations and why I'm providing this statement today as opposed to next week, is I really want to follow up with our conversation on the stewardship plan, but plan to seed in advance or over the next week for you to think about. I've attempted my best to keep this at a high level and use all facts. There is not entirely there are a few opinions in here, but it's really based on facts. And I also want to note that given some of your additions to the proposed budget, some of the calculations might not be perfect. But I I've worked with administration to, wherever possible, ensure that the numbers are are completely accurate. And so I want to open by saying Tourism Jasper's Board of Directors has recently passed a motion to directly engage in advocacy matters affecting the visitor economy. We plan to work collaboratively with the Chamber of Commerce and Hotel Association and the entire business community to communicate with and proactively provide policymakers feedback such that they can make informed decisions. And I'm sure we can all agree that Tourism Ja- Tourism Jasper's track record provides proves that we are a collaborative partner willing to put in not only the work but invest financially in issues as they arise, as seen historically with our contributions to the C N place and the Jim Bennett stage, recent efforts to provide hockey dressing rooms and a soon-to-be-announced philanthropic funding mechanism that we're excited to bring to the community shortly. However, given the twenty twenty-four municipal draft budget proposing a year-over-year tax increase of sixteen percent, and that is calculated with the additions that the that council included, we feel we must speak up. So we all know that Jasper's mill rate is five to one with commercial properties generating eighty percent of tax revenues, representing Alberta's second highest per-business tax capacity within our comparative set. Conversely, with a per-dwelling calculation, residential's residential properties in Jasper pay the least in any comparable municipality in Jasper, and that's built on the Verum Report, which I'll allude to throughout this statement. As administration alluded to during the budget deliberations, the if the municipality of Jasper and council adopted a residential calc- tax calculation at the average rate of their comparable set, the municipality would generate an additional one point one million dollars in revenue per year. We believe that knowing that the municipality is leaving money on the table, because while it does spend thirty-two percent of municipal expenditures on visitor-facing services, which, by the way, we applaud, Jasper's businesses are burdened with five times the taxation. And so, quote, "This would indicate that there is not a significant level of excess financial capacity available in the non-residential base in these communities relative to the comparable municipalities in the province," and that's sorry, unquote, that's directly from the Verum Report as well. So knowing all of that, it is only reasonable to suggest that any double-digit increase to taxation should only be considered after all other revenue options have been explored fully, including residential tax rates. So this, all this commentary acknowledges that the commercial sector is doing more than its fair share of municipal tax creation. So doing so lowers the tax burden on residential dwellings, allowing for a combined one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars per capita invested in community development investment, that is, F C S S and recreation and parks, and that's directly out of the Verum Report, creating substantial value for residents and visitors alike. I should also note that that twelve hundred dollar figure are is the number one expenditure in the comparable set within the Verum Report. So understanding all this context, I want to provide three specific feedback points on the proposed budget. So first, a tax increase of sixteen percent is extraordinarily high. This level of spending is entirely unmaintainable, given that the commercial cap and town boundary strictly limit any alternative sustainable revenue mechanism for the municipality. Just provide a bit of a list here. Edmonton, seven percent, Calgary, seven point eight percent, St. Albert, five point five, Sherwood Park, four point six nine, Grand Prairie, three point two eight, Red Deer, four point three eight, Red, Leftbridge, five point one, Medicine At, five, Canmore, seven point six, Bant, four point six five. With the average year-over-year tax increase of the destinations I just provided, five point five four percent. So with an increase of sixteen percent, Jasper very well might be, because obviously that isn't a full selection of municipalities in Alberta, home to the largest year-over-year tax increase of any municipality in Alberta by more than double and three times the average. Second, we have a serious concerns about the debt being incurred by the municipality. I really tried to avoid going into detail on any specific line, but feel that it's necessary with transit. While congratulations are in order on the five million dollar grant received, it comes with a three million dollar spending obligation for a service that's already existing and functioning, sorry. Proceeding with a more robust transit service without a transfer transit master plan, although I will acknowledge that I believe the mayor passed the motion to suggest implementing one within the budget, begs the question, is it worth it when we do not know the full operational costs of operating a new fleet, let alone an electric fleet and a facility? Uh, begs the question, is it worth it when we do not know the full operational costs of operating a new fleet, let alone an electric fleet and a facility? More broadly, in twenty twenty-two, the municipality's uh, debt was eleven million dollars. By twenty twenty-five, in total, the debt is expected to be thirty-six point seven with a debt limit of thirty-nine million. Which is ninety-five percent of the debt limit. Which increased from twenty-seven percent four years earlier, so I'll just repeat that, in twenty twenty-five, the debt limit will be ninety-five percent. Now, that leaves one uh, primary o- option for the municipality. And that is to increase taxes further to increase the debt limit. Uh, further compounding this issue. And so this will only create a downward negative feedback loop, especially in an unstable interest environment. As seen by this year's mandatory half-million-dollar increase to debt service. So please consider the implement uh, implications of this decision on Jasper's long-term financial health. How these decisions position us, uh, how do these position us uh, to respond to a fire? Or to a cost overrun on a major infrastructure project? Or to higher uh, increasing interest rates? So third and final point. I, and this is, this is the, I think, the most important one, the one that wraps everything together and. I want to remind and acknowledge that uh, the hardest thing about leadership is saying no. And while we find ourselves responsible in many instances of leadership of the long-term health of our constituents. We want to say yes to create value for those constituents. Uh, but we also have to balance uh, what's best for the entire community and incorporate into our thinking. The downward pressure this type of increase will put on the most vulnerable in Jasper. Those who are already feeling the brunt of an affordability crisis. Because I fear while spending uh, will only hurt those, because I fear. Spending at this level will only uh, hurt the those most susceptible in our community. Because a sixteen percent increase will all but guarantee that those costs will be passed down. From uh, residential owners to tenants and from uh, commercial property owners to tenants, which are businesses. Which will need to create uh, the the cost efficiency somewhere. And I'll just mention too that this isn't about. As much as this is about the largest commercial sector, large employers. This will affect the main street employers, the mom and pop operators the most. So I really want to make that clear that this isn't us pushing um, big business. This is our concern for the visitor experience at a sidewalk level. And so in closing, I would implore you to consider cutting unnecessary operational and cap uh, capital expenditures. To reduce the tax uh, increase to under ten percent or however um, it it's calculated. Uh, bringing the rise in line with other provincial or with the provincial averages. And so with that, really want to thank you for allowing me to provide this statement. I'm not expecting any deliberation or or questions, although I'll gladly gladly answer them. Um, but really just felt it was uh, needed to provide a macro perspective on the situation. Uh, budget deliberations are very hard and administration put uh, a lot of thought into preparing the documents and you discussed it over two days. Um, but we wanted to provide a thirty thousand foot view uh, from the commercial sector. And so with that, I will answer any questions, although that definitely wasn't our objective, it was just to table that statement. So again, Deputy Mayor Hall, thanks for that opportunity.
Thank you, Mister Jackson, for your statement. The weeks in between budget deliberations and when it comes for fi- for uh, final consideration is when we want to hear from residents and stakeholders. And so I thank you very much for your statement today. Counselor Demora.
Well, I thank you for that and um. You know, not really anticipating that that this conversation was gonna happen today. I I did ask to have an item on the agenda today um, called Budget Dialogue. And I appreciate administration for assisting me with that term because I think. Um, we do need a a longer filter process from um, administrations um, presentations. And our potential uh, additions to the budget, and those are potential. So like, I understand the sixteen percent is another three percent on top of what was initially proposed. Um, you know, and and there's a lot of things to weigh in and and one of the things that was brought up too is, uh, you know. BAF had acknowledged their seventeen percent um, cutback in in their twenty twenty budget during the pandemic. Um, and I remember watching their council deliberations and knowing full well that those. Those um, cutbacks were going to impact the future budgets and same similar thing happened here. And unfortunately, it didn't get marketed well or addressed as well as we wanted it to, I think. Anyway, because there are future implications and and we're still coming out of that. Um, you know, one of their biggest, uh, one of my biggest takeaways from BAF at the time. Was that, you know, they embraced that and and they knew that they weren't operating at full capacity. So to um, to to go out and and do a tax requisition as they were uh. Going at full capacity didn't seem like the viable thing to do and we we took a similar route. Um, and I understand even today that that does have implications and they're acknowledging that right now. And they're starting, they they've admitted that they're starting at a ten percent increase. Um, they're in double digits already minded that the, they have a bigger municipality than we do and a higher visitation rate. Um. A lot of my dialogue here, I'm trying to save for later. But uh, one of the things that I did want to say is that we're, we've embarked into a priority-based budget, not an incremental budget. That's what we want to end up to, and I think one of the questions I'm gonna ask later is that are we at a place where we can actually? Have we built our infrastructure and and our uh, resource base even with our uh, savings? To be in a position to cut back services and stuff? Have we got big enough to do that? And I'm not sure we are, and that's why we're always faced with prioritizing our increments. And this is where we're at, you know, we've, administration has come forward and and given us a base budget. And asked us to, you know, consider some of these add-ons and we're not even considering some of the stuff that we're already doing. So it it is a bit of a struggle. So um, you know, I I appreciate you coming forward and that these are a lot of things that. Were that that are tough things to consider and I'm glad that you're here addressing a lot of that because. Everything that you said are in my notes for later, so thanks.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and I I'll try not to extend this too long. Um, I appreciate your comments, um, they're they're well received, I thank you for that. I wanted to make one correction, um. The mayor doesn't pass motions, the mayor made a motion, council passed it. Um. Again, with with respect to the debt issue, um, thank you for that, um, take that under advisement and and consideration. Um, I won't um, request the comment, but um, as you said in your earlier presentation. The town needs some love and not just for beautification. Um, we've incurred debt, um, and it's from our perspective been necessary debt. And yes, there is a cost to that and and I appreciate that particularly as we look at. Um, the debt servicing levels, but um. Perhaps one of the issues is that love has been withheld for too long and it comes, eventually you you've got to pay the viper. Um, the second thing, and I I can leave this with you and you'll join us again a week from now, um, a couple of hours later and a week from now. Um. You, you left a suggestion um, that we cut unnecessary spending. If you can help us define what is unnecessary, that is exactly why we are here. And that is the challenge and um, you referenced the additions to the budget, which might um, complicate the calculations. But again, much of that was directed at support for the nonprofit sector. Um, or as some say, the social profit sector. Um, and again, a collaborative effort is required for the community. Um, we need to enhance the capability of the nonprofit sector to add value to the community and that too becomes a challenge. So again, it's just part of the same question, if you can return in a week with some suggestions about um. Unnecessary spending that you think we're incurring, I would really be delighted to hear that.
I think our plan is to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce and the business community to help facilitate that feedback uh, next week. We just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to provide you with that macro uh, non-budget line perspective. But we will definitely work with our colleagues uh, to facilitate that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Jackson, any other comments from council? No, thank you for your time today. At this time, I'm gonna call a brief five-minute break as Jasper Employment Education Centre gets set up for the next presentation. Fifty-five. Welcome back. We are moving on to agenda item five point two, the Jasper Employment and Education Centre is here to present their labor market study. We have Sad Betty, Holly Johnson and Heidi Baloo.
Hi, everybody, thanks for having us here today. Um, so yeah, my name's Holly Johnson from Ballad Group. Um, and I'm just gonna keep my phone here to return my time. Um, so we're here today to present the Jasper Labor Market Study. Um, but we always like to start with the land acknowledgement, so we know that the municipality of Jasper is located on Treaty Six and Eight. The traditional territory and meeting ground gathering place of the Denisa, the Neheawak, Anishinaabe, um, Soewett, Pemec. Um, story in Dakota, and it is also the homeland of the Métis Nation of Alberta, uh, Region Four. Um, there's a little bit about Ballad, you can find out more about us on on the website. But our primary um, focus is working with municipalities, First Nations, Métis governments and public and private sector organizations across Canada. So we thought we would start with a presentation of the work that was done. So this work started back in March of this year. Um, we, the project steering committee that we worked with was driven um, by Jeanette Marco, who is joining us online. And then now we've been working with um, Heidi Baloo of the um, of J E C. And then we also on the committee was James Jackson of Jasper uh, Tourism Jasper and then Bill Given of the municipality of Jasper. Patty Pavlov of the Chamber of Commerce, Kyla McGillis um, from Parks Canada and Nancy Robins of Community Futures West Yellowhead. So thanks to everybody who helped guide us through this project and helped us um, review the final report. Which I have here and will be distributed through the project partners um, on Thursday. So the objective of this project was to gather inputs and insights from all impacted stakeholders regarding their interests. As they relate to labor market needs, growth and sustainability. To contribute to the development of accurate and localized data sets on various labor market performance measures. To and then to inform the development of actionable recommendations associated with labor market recruitment, retention and skill development. And then to keep impacted stakeholders informed um, throughout the project from planning to completion, which um, today will mark the completion of the project. Um, so the primary data that we um, that we collected throughout this project, which took place from about April until the end of July of this year. So we were able to survey a hundred and eleven business owners in Jasper. We completed fourteen in-depth interviews with cross-industry business owners and then eight. Um, in-depth interviews with representatives of organization representing key project stakeholder groups. We also surveyed um, three hundred and forty-six labor market participants. Um, through our labor market participant survey and then a hu- a four hundred and fifteen through Tourism Jasper's newcomer orientation program. So this represents twenty-eight percent of the municipally listed businesses um, in the community. And thirty-one percent of Jasper's labor market has been engaged um, as measured using census data. Um, all of this points to shortages and vacancies in in Jasper and that tourism is the most impacted sector, which is not a surprise to probably anybody here. Um, the, so when we talk vacancy rate, that's um, open positions available. Uh, the impact, the sectors that are the highest impacted are accommodation and food, services, transportation and warehousing, retail. Arts, entertainment and recreation, so tourism um, directly uh, sectors directly involved in tourism and then those that um, also support tourism. Um, vacancy rates in Jasper eclipsed the nas- eclipsed the national average in twenty twenty-three. Rural deep population of younger workers is affecting the local labor market. Um, the median age of workers in Jasper is one point two years above the provincial average, showing a younger population. Um, shortages are pushing up wages and stretching workers beyond usual schedules. And then younger workers in the area are not as equipped with skills required by employers, leading to external hiring or upskilling of existing employees. Are some of the kind of high-level findings that we found in the report. Um, all of this information, so this this primary research um, put together with secondary research that we. That we conducted um, helped us identify six main themes and then those. And then within those themes, we came up with um, a hopefully achievable and actionable recommendations. Um, that could be used to address the six main themes that we identified. So I'll pass it on to my colleague Assad to talk about the themes and the recommendations.
Perfect, thank you very much, Holly. So yeah, just as Holly was mentioning, the initial part of the report was research based on qualitative data collected from engagement and quantitative data. Collected from economic analysis and some environmental scans. And so we had uh, ended up with a few themes, six of them in total, of what we felt the labor market um, needed to be addressed in. In order to ensure that there's more sustainable uh, predictable, reliable growth and addressing major issues that are currently affecting Jasper. The first one that we'll go over is hiring processes and training. So this is something we had heard both from engagement as well as from the analysis that we had done with data. Uh, there's some understanding there that there needs to be improvement in the hiring processes that businesses are utilizing. As well as the training measures that employees are um, have available to them. So generally, the themes that we had um, uh, addressed in this category included identifying employer needs. Partnerships with key stakeholders, as well as education and dissemination. So some of the examples of what we mean by identifying employer needs will be things like conducting a very detailed assessment of what employers actually require to fill their positions. So although everybody knows that there's a need for more labor in Jasper. And there's a need for more skills in Jasper, having a very in-depth analysis on what those needs particularly are. So that training programs, for example, can be tailored to meet those needs were some of the recommendations that we had made when we were looking at this theme. Moving on to the next one. We talk about sourcing workers from external markets, so as I referenced before. Uh, Jasper has a need for more labor available to its businesses, to its employers. Um, there is a inability of the local market to meet the current demand, which is more typical of tourism communities and a lot of communities in um, in the mountains. So we have to look at then external markets that we could rely on for getting some labor. And when we're looking at this as a theme, we saw that one of the, or sorry, two of the major areas that we should be looking at to address in. Our supports for newcomers and marketing in the right places. What we mean by this is that when newcomers do come to Jasper, whether they're Albertaan, Canadian or otherwise. Uh, they do need to have supports available to them to ensure that they feel that Jasper is welcoming, that Jasper is a place that they can stay. And it helps with the retention of the labor. It helps with just making sure that they're not just a transient population, which will then leave for, say, Edmonton or another municipality. Um, and then are not, obviously no longer available for Jasper's labor force and labor needs. Also, marketing in the right places talks about exactly who do you want to target to come into Jasper and the population that you do like want to retain as part of your labor force. So we're looking at certain demographics and particular um, groups of people who are probably best fitted for Jasper's um, lifestyle as well as for Jasper's labor needs. The next thing we had looked at was company culture, so this is something that is relevant all across Canada. Um, the better culture you have and the more um, welcoming and sustainable your workplace is, the more people will want to work and stay in that place. So company culture is something that we wanted to address as well. And we were, when we were looking at this, the themes of what we wanted to recommend ended up being sharing best practices, recognizing success. And education and capacity building. So sharing best practices comes from a current gap that exists between, say, large employers and small employers. Larger employers have the capacity, they have the H R teams that can help with policies and processes and they know what's available for um. Resources and what their employees need to ensure that they're retained. Whereas smaller employers likely do not have the capacity or the resources available to them uh, to make sure that those gaps are being addressed. So looking at some of those things and making sure that they're being addressed was part of what we wanted to look at for company culture. Recognizing success is also something that we wanted to comment on. Recognizing success is also something that we wanted to comment on. So a lot of times, a lot of employers, they make great strides and great efforts in these fields, but they're not often recognized for their success. And even though it's, um, sometimes just a qualitative measure, it doesn't have any, say, uh, distinct, um, fiscal bearing. It can mean a lot for an employer to be recognized for the efforts that they're putting in, even from, say, the, the chamber or from other groups that are, that businesses are looking to. So we wanted to make sure that that's one of the recommendations we had because those sort of things help advertise the great work that's being done by the employers in Jasper. And it helps make sure that both employers and employees are aware of the various efforts that are being put forth and also the efforts that could be put forth by, say, other employers or what employees can expect from their employers. And then we also wanted to talk about education and capacity building. So this is very related to the first point, but when small businesses, for example, have limited resources and when you might not know what best practices are, what is the best way for me to make sure my restaurant staff is engaged or to make sure that my, uh, my otherwise retail staff or whatever sort of business you have are engaged and they feel that they're part of the workforce and they feel heard and so on and so forth. Providing that education and providing those resources in lieu of, say, the capacity that a larger organization would have is what we are recommending here to ensure that that gap again, that exists between the people with the resources and groups that don't have the resources is more filled and allows for a more equitable, um, labor market overall in Jasper. The next theme that we had was seasonality. So as is quite abundantly appeared, uh, you know, from this particular week, seasonality affects Jasper. Um, I don't think I need to tell any of you that, but, uh, we wanted to look at how seasonality could be addressed in, um, some structural ways to better benefit the overall labor market that exists in Jasper. And so some of the themes that we came up with here was strategic positioning and diversification. Diversification speaks for itself, talks about, you know, activities that could be hosted during the, um, the low seasons and help with just keeping economic activity up during, um, those times, whereas strategic positioning talks more about how employers can help retain their employees during those low seasons and different strategies that could be employed to ensure that employees don't have to worry about a lack of work or maybe not having work for those low seasons so that they see command, uh, see, they see Jasper as a community they stay in over the year, not just in the summer months, as an example. The last that we have here are cost of living, and then afterwards we'll have housing. So we want to first recognize that these are very big structural topics that require a lot of collaboration, a lot of stakeholders, both in the community and outside the community. And so these are things that we wanted to be cognizant of when we're making these recommendations that these aren't problems that can be fixed in, you know, just a few weeks or a few years even. They require very powerful action from a lot of key stakeholders, uh, to ensure that there's any movement in these spaces. That being said, when we look at cost of living, it is obviously something that is affecting particularly employees across the municipality. Um, housing as well, it's, um, it's just the nature of the tourist communities and mountain communities that they have a higher cost of living than, um, other municipalities in Canada. When we were looking at cost of living, we found that more research and data gathering is probably one of the first steps that should be made in this space. Strategic partnerships, like I mentioned before, are key for addressing the needs that will, um, that are coming out from cost of living needs of the employees in Jasper. And of course, maintaining and enhancing existing programs. So there's a lot of effort that we do want to recognize that the municipality is putting forth and other stakeholders are putting forth to address these topics. So enhancing these programs and maintaining them, we feel is going to be very powerful for employees, um, as they're going through the challenges that they are in Jasper. And lastly, we have housing. So when we're looking at housing, like I mentioned before, this is a very big structural challenge that cannot be just fixed in a, in a few sessions here, but it is something that we wanted to recognize as a challenge for employees and employers in Jasper. Um, the simple reality being that sometimes employees cannot find a place to stay in Jasper, and oftentimes if employers do not have accommodations available for staff, they won't be able to fill their positions. And so we wanted to look at how to best help address these challenges. And so developing specific action plans, uh, such as looking at how, um, a strategy could be developed for certain types of housing or for how to develop certain areas of Jasper, as an example. Combined, committing the eff, the community efforts, again, talking about how putting together stakeholders, putting together teams that could address this topic is going to be key for this measure as well. And then promote, promoting development through land use. So obviously, understanding the limitations that Jasper has, both as a, um, a place with limited development capacity, but also with the different policies and processes that are in place that may limit Jasper's ability to develop. We want to ensure that, um, there are whatever Jasper is able to do through land use could help develop and promote, um, housing particularly for the needs of the labor market. Again, um, we wanted to give a very high-level snapshot view of everything. Um, there are nineteen recommendations in total, which themselves have various action items beneath them that we didn't want to, you know, give all of our time into, but wanted to give a quick snapshot, which we have just done, and now I'm, we're very happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Turn to the table if there's any questions or comments from council. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Paul. I'm, I'm happy to begin, um, although there may be no end. I, I, I will say I was, uh, intrigued by the report and, and not so much the, the presentation, which is fine, but the actual report that you're going to circulate, um, later. But if it's appropriate, I have questions related to that, and it's, um, it's engrossing. Um, there is a lot of useful information in there, and I really appreciate it. But I'm struck by, by some, um, information which has been perplexing. Um, and early on, um, in the document, um, you talk about, um, the advantages and the disadvantages of, of Jasper, and just generally speaking, um, most of us see remoteness as an advantage, um, but I understand from a labor perspective, um, not so much. But there is a, a reference in, in that section, um, under disadvantages to housing, which I understand, and residency restrictions. What is meant by residency restrictions that are a disadvantage in the community?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. So when, yeah, when we were looking at the advantages and disadvantages firstly, obviously, as you had mentioned, um, some of the disadvantages could be seen as advantages and vice versa, just because of the nature of, um, the different perspectives you can take on this. We were looking at it from a particularly labor perspective. When we're looking at residency restrictions, it is just, um, another measure of housing. So housing particularly, we, what we were trying to say were, um, employees that were looking for accommodations for labor. So if someone's trying to start working at a clothing store and they can't find retail space, oh, sorry, they can't find rental space and they can't afford a house, for example, those are restrictions to their housing. Residency restrictions were things more so where employers sometimes have staff accom available to help, um, to help, um, house their employees. There are some, um, some inherent, um, challenges with that, one being that it ties your housing obviously to your, to your job, and so there's less mobility available to those employees. Um, that is sometimes the nature of work, um, but that is something that needs to be considered in those accommodation circumstances. Um, and then obviously the other challenge being that even in those cases, um, employers that have resources would be able to do so. Typically, smaller employers, mom and pop shops are not going to be able to afford staff accom. So we just did a slight distinction between housing and, um, and, and general residency, but it is talking basically about what's available for employees to live in, and some clarification on that can be definitely made in the report.
All right. Thanks for that. I just wanted to be clear that you weren't speaking about the federal residency regulations um, in effect here as a disadvantage. And I take it you're not?
Yeah, so we, we definitely highlight and recognize, and I think even in the housing section, mentioned the, you know, the restrictions that are available or the restrictions that Jasper encourages because of the, um, just because of the nature of the municipality. However, we understand that the municipality of Jasper has no control over some of these, um, some of these measures like negotiate, uh, like negotiations and, um, collaborations apart on this front. And so we wanted to focus more on what is, um, very directly actionable rather than, um, rather than, um, issues that are, again, much more structural and have longer conversations associated with them.
Thank you for that. Again, just to, to give me some better context, um, I think locally we have a perception of the importance of the tourism industry, um, to the community. Um, your report indicates some numbers that surprised me a bit. Um, sixty-three percent of employment is within what you're calling the, the tourism sector, and I can understand that. But there is a graph, um, in the not yet public part of, of the report, on page nine of that report, that shows the contribution to GDP. And you forecast, I think, um, GDP to be two hundred and forty-six million for, for the end of this year. Um, I take it that's total. Um, it seems like that's an increase, but I, I would like to know from, from what number. And then there is a reference elsewhere in the document in around the same section that suggests that, um, ninety-one million is attributable to tourism, but I'm not sure if that's growth in tourism or, or overall. And if you could just clarify some of those numbers, I would, I would appreciate that. Um, and in the context of the graph on page nine that shows the contribution of the tourism sector at about forty percent, um, real estate leasing and rental services, um, up fifteen to twenty percent, but then all of that far at the top is everything else, but in fact, more than forty percent. So, so of the three sectors, um, tourism is not the largest, which, um, surprises me.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for, um, the comment because this was actually something that, you know, did come up a few times when we were working with the project steering committee. So tourism definitely is, um, uh, both in our opinion and our analysis, the most impactful industry in Jasper. So this graph particularly is grouping tourism, um, per a definition that we're utilizing from. Um, it's in one of the footnotes. You will have to forgive me for not having it off the top of my head, but it's, it's utilizing a definition of different industries that fit under that category. And so we are bundling those as, as tourism, quote unquote. Um, however, the real estate industry, these other industries which are then being collected from SASCAN, um, it is, it is in our opinion that these are heavily impacted and growing because of tourism. So while they might not fit that direct definition that we're using just to have some distinction between tourism and non-tourism industries, um, if for whatever reason tourism is no longer a, uh, effective industry in Jasper, we have, it's not the expectation of us that those other sections are going to remain the same in terms of contribution to GDP. They would be significantly diminished because a lot of them are directly only growing because of tourism. So that is, um, I'm, I'm, thank you for asking my question. I was, I was glad I was able to give that clarification because, um, we're just, we're just distinguishing them so we can basically have categories to analyze and look into. However, tourism, that, those tourism industries, for example, if I was just to use real estate as an, as an example, almost like, uh, uh, the vast majority of it is driven by tourism and the realities of tourism, um, when it comes to mountain communities. And just quickly on the other question in terms of growth versus the total, it is the total amount. I don't have the figure for the last GDP that we had, um, uh, forecasted, sorry, before we had done the forecast, the GDP figure we were using. But the ninety-one million, for example, is the total amount that we're expecting to come from, again, specifically those tourism industries, although that ninety-one million again is then going to impact other industries and have, uh, let's say ripple effects that will then expand the amount that tourism is actually having. Um, to, in terms of analysis, it can be a little bit tricky sometimes to real iron down, really iron down what those distinctions are, like, you know, tourism is having this much impact. So how much impact is exactly happening in other industries can be a little bit tricky sometimes, but do want to make clear, and, um, there are parts of the report that speak to this, that tourism is very much so the most impactful industry in Jasper and is affecting every other industry.
Can I just add to what my colleague said that a, as well, um, on, so in Jasper, the tourism very closely tied tourism industries are forty percent of GDP. But on page ten, it also states that tourism only accounts for thirteen of percent of GDP provincially. So it still supports the fact that tourism is a, is the largest industry by far in Jasper.
Right, and, and I do appreciate that. And so the explanation that I've heard, uh, apart from the comparison to elsewhere, which helps us, I think, in advocacy efforts, um, that you have measured in that, say, roughly forty percent, the most direct tourism impact, but there are lots of other indirect, um, impacts. And I think that, um, is consistent with the local perception of, of what's happening here, that, uh, jobs are tied to tourism even though they don't look like they are. If I might, I have, I have one other issue that I can ask now and then leave it. And this, this relates more to housing. Somewhere in the report, um, you have indicated that over the next two years, um, you forecast that we need another hundred and fifty, with a hundred and fifty-two, um, employees somewhere in the town, like overall. And I think I got from the document that there is an existing shortfall of about three hundred and ten some units. So is it fair to say that, uh, your projections are that we, taking current and two-year horizon, we are four hundred and fifty to five hundred units, um, short in our housing needs?
Yeah, thank, uh, thank you for the question, Mayor. So, um, when looking at, um, I'll speak to housing directly and then to the, the labor shortfall. So when looking at housing directly, there is currently a, a need for more units in Jasper. That's, I think, common knowledge probably. And those are taken into factors such as affordability, inadequacy, and suitability. Uh, unaffordability being just simply the cost that people can afford. Uh, inadequacy being, um, units that may require major repair before they are safely habitable. And then, uh, suitability being, um, one that affected Jasper, I know deeply, a few years back, uh, is in regards to overcrowding and, you know, more people living in a space than the national occupancy, occupancy standards would allow or advocate for. So based on those factors, there's currently a shortfall of units in Jasper. And then we are projecting that to basically increase into the future. And the way we are projecting that is from the labor shortfall that we're also projecting to increase. The labor shortfall that you had referenced there that we, um, that we are projecting um, is based on a number of permanent positions as well. So we are looking at the number of people that need to come and stay in Jasper to fill those, um, those currently vacant positions that require them year-round. That does not take into account, say, transit needs as things get busier in the summer, for example, or, you know, the, the part-time jobs or otherwise that people might come in for just for one season. So that is, that is a separate number as well that we do want to make clear. Um, from then, uh, sorry, from there, the growth in those vacancies that we're expecting to the, the other figure that you had mentioned, that is, um, um, that is coming from just the, again, just the permanent positions. And then the housing that we had required would be to accommodate both those permanent positions, so the people that'd be staying permanently in Jasper, as well as those transient populations, as well as those people who are currently not living in a, um, um, appropriate housing situation. So it's both about solving, or sorry, I would say, addressing the current needs, the needs that would come from the growing permanent population, and the needs that would come from the transient population as labor grows in Jasper. And we're expecting it to grow because we are expecting tourism and GDP overall to increase in Jasper. That's, there's more economic activity, which results in more expansion, which results in more need um, in housing and people, uh, having a place to stay. Regarding the specific figures, um, I don't have the, um, I don't have them like directly, uh, in front of me right now, or all the, basically the numbers that we're utilizing to come up with those figures. Um, but I can definitely, um, look into that deeper and follow up through, uh, GQ here to provide more information on that.
Great. Well, I, I do appreciate that, and I, I also appreciate that this was a labor market study, but a community is an integrated whole, and I was really impressed with the way the labor market study integrated, uh, housing elements and social equity elements. Um, it was, it was a great read. So I, I thank you for it. Um, I will be questioning to others, but I, I really did appreciate reading the, the full report.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Any other questions or comments from council?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Are there questions or comments from council? Barring no questions or comments from council, are we ready to move to accept this information or do we need a bit more time to compile our questions? No, the councillor will need to make a motion. Or Mayor, Mayor Ireland.
Sorry, I've got to get out of one document and back to another one. Similar to the previous delegation, I think that the the suggestion here was a different word than we are used to. And I'm just looking for, it's at the beginning of your slide presentation, I think, today. If I could find it somewhere, the request. I'm looking for a document that I can't find, but there was a request that we, I think, adopt the report and assign actions to others, which is a bit of a challenge because, again, it's a cohesive undertaking for the community, but council is not in a position to assign work to other bodies. We could receive the report and we could, as we did earlier, direct administration to implement those actions that are appropriate to the municipality. But it's challenging, in the words that you presented to us, I think, for us to assign work to other bodies. We just can't do that. But I am looking for whatever that actual request was, and it might be in the opening words of the
It's first page of the
Okay, second, second page, actually. I thought it is, thank you. So it says, adoption of the report by council and assigning tasks to appropriate community members to action recommendations. So again, we could, we could receive the report and direct administration to review it and provide council with recommendations to action various implementation steps that are appropriate to the municipality, if that is what you're requesting.
Yes, that's what we're requesting, and similar to the report prior to this from Tourism Jasper, you know, endorsing this report as well as bringing it to action items within the municipality, as well as it will continue with the steering committee.
Thank you for that. If I may, Deputy Mayor, just direct a question to administration to ensure that whatever motion we might make will be understood and achievable by administration.
Thanks very much, Sheriff, through Deputy Mayor Hall. So in both of these presentations, the municipality is actually a funder of both. We provide, provided cash contributions to support the development of both of these studies. So I think it's probably appropriate for the municipality to take a similar approach to both, where committee recommend council endorse. So really, you're acknowledging the receipt, adding the municipality's weight behind it. And then you could, as with the other plans, direct administration to identify the municipality's current efforts that are underway. So I think it really is the same two motions in just about exactly the same format. The consequence of that would be council, again, sort of acknowledging that this work has happened and that it's completed and that the municipality generally supports the concepts that are aligned in the report. And then also ask administration, okay, so what? So what are we already doing that's aligned with this? And what other actions might the municipality take to support the recommendations of the plan? And that would be an item that would come back.
Mayor Ireland, would you like to make that motion?
I am prepared to make a motion that committee recommend council endorse the Jasper Labor Market Study and direct administration to review the study, identify opportunities for the municipality of Jasper to participate in implementation of the study and to return to committee with recommendations.
Thank you for your motion, administration. We're all good. Excellent. Any debate on the motion? I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Jasper Implement and Education Centre, the Labor Market Study for coming today. Oh, councillor Demota.
Well, before everybody takes off, I appreciate the presentation. I didn't have a lot of questions. They were answered throughout. And but while we had Heidi here, I just, you know, on the topic of labor in the community and just recently undertaken the Alberta Living Wage and becoming part of that process, I was just wondering what type of communication have you had with people looking for employment and basically trying to wrap their head around that? Have you had a lot of questions since that information's been released to the community?
Well, mostly most employees who are looking at something like that, it's a bit laughable because it's quoted as twenty-four, twenty-four dollars and eighty cents, which most people are not meeting that because of multiple different issues. The seasonality, layoffs in the shoulder season make it really hard for people to attain twenty-four dollars. And entry-level positions are basically at sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour. So, yes, we get a huge amount of increase, especially in this season pertaining to people being laid off. And our second is, the number one question right now is the Rural Renewal Program pertaining to temporary foreign workers. I would say we solicit up to twenty to thirty requests from overseas, mostly from people who are temporary foreign workers in Jasper who want to stay and want to be part of that program. So we will be implementing a program to support that as well because it is such a carrot and a motivation for employers and employees to say, I want to stay, I want to continue to be here longer. So there's multiple implications on living wage. Of course, everybody wants to make a bit more money. It is an expensive place. And so, yes, there is reaction to that. Of course, everybody's like, how come we can't make a bit more? And we recognize and understand there's multiple factors of why that's not happening in Jasper.
Okay, I just thought it was an important question to ask because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding behind the whole idea behind it. And I think that, you know, collectively with the organizations in our community that we need to do, we need to take a bigger step into communicating what that actually means and what that could mean to employers. And, you know, from our lens, it'll be through kind of our commitment, through our strategic planning and our budget to help influence that and maybe bring it down where we can. But, you know, I just, I just think that we need to better communicate to the businesses and, you know, primarily, and then educating the public more so on what that actually means and particularly in comparisons to other communities. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland.
If I may, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And just relative to that, when I mentioned earlier that I was impressed by the integration of various elements, I did mention social equity and what I was referencing in part was, I thought that the very astute recognition of the living wage component. So it is addressed in the report. And the report was written at a time when things were still in development. But the report indicates is that additionally, in March of 2023, Jasper Council approved a motion to join the Alberta Living Wage Network. This will help address the cost of living in Jasper by generating key information that can be used to better inform policy and programs, ultimately to a more affordable community. And that is exactly the message that we are trying to get out. And you've recognized a couple of aspects that the municipality has undertaken that will affect the living wage or have already affected the living wage. And you identified childcare for one and transit for another. And the whole motion, and yes, the number is right, I think it's twenty-four ninety, but that can be achieved in a variety of ways. And again, the report recognizes that benefits can be added and it could be housing. And you've indicated that a really large number of employers in the community already provide either free or subsidized housing, and that works to reduce the living wage component. And so those steps are underway, and the additional information will, in fact, as exactly as you suggest, provide the necessary information so that we can adopt policies and programs that better focus on reducing the living wage in the community. And for comparables, yes, it seems like it's way less than Canmore, but it's really close to St. Albert and Fortman Murray. And I just read VC has released theirs. We are strikingly similar to Rebelso. So, yes, we are seen as high, but it is the reality in other communities. And Rebelso might be an example out of province of another tourism-based economy where similar things are happening. And of course, Canmore isn't, hasn't yet entered the field, but we will see. But I really did appreciate your approach to the living wage topic in the report, and I thank you for that.
Just for information, we are hoping this week we have applied for employer services support money from the province. So it seems the provincial government is recognizing that because of labor shortages, they do want to invest in supporting employers as well as looking at things like the increase in immigration rates to places in Alberta. And so hopefully we get some dollars to implement this. Most of our services right now are employee-facing and educational-facing. Now, we do not have enough services to provide support for employers and for recruitment efforts. So we hope that shifts in the next few weeks. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, new business. Oh, gee, was there a motion that we didn't vote on? I think we voted.
Oh, yes, we did. And then this conversation started again. And if I may, just as people are leaving, I thank you for your indulgence to my suggestion that we let Sergeant Batasey go first. So he was in uniform and could turn to work. I'm sure he would have enjoyed the presentations, but we enjoy the security he provides to the community.
Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, seven point one, budget dialogue. That was councillor Demota's addition. Go ahead.
Jumping right into it, I was looking at the clock going, okay, there's somebody, hopefully we should have enough time. Here we have twenty minutes on the clock. Well, I hope that my fashion statement today isn't really impacting our discussions. I saw that on one of our local media sources, that on social media, it was important what I was wearing that day when I was zooming in. I don't know why. But I'm glad that, you know, there's some attention paid to councillors' apparel at work. Anyway, the reason I wanted to add this today is just to have a broader discussion on, you know, some of the concerns that we might be looking at individually because we, you know, we didn't have a lot of time to work together after getting all the information. And I think sometimes sharing information is good. One of the things that I, one of the reasons I wanted to bring this forward is just because of the weight of this particular budget and, you know, just from past experience, I want to avoid any type of frustration or future discussion. I don't know if this council's actually built that way, but, you know, it's good to get more dialogue out so that there isn't perceived animosity or anything towards anyone, whether it's administration or fellow councillors. And I think that sometimes people can have an opinion on something and sometimes we can be easily, we can easily have our minds changed. And I think that having more dialogue helps us understand, you know, where we're coming from when it comes to the budget.
Thank you for that. Is there any comments? Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. This is a question for administration. And in the commentary by Tourism Jasper, there are a number of, I think, percentage increases that were mentioned for a variety of communities. And I did see and shared with councillor Demota, the bounce starting at about ten percent for their Have we had any update as to where other councils have gone thus far? Or are majority of councils in that eight to twelve percent range of increases year over year? Recognizing, of course, each municipality or each area is different.
Deputy Mayor Hall for councillor Melnick. So no administration has not undertaken a survey of other municipalities. Certainly, you know, that's something that we can do. I would say that there is such a wide variety of approaches to municipal budgeting that might be challenging, including in terms of timelines. So some municipalities are in, most municipalities are in their budgeting process right now. Some may follow the practice of setting up a preliminary budget, not completing until later. That's more common on the rural side than the urban side. So I don't know that there, you know, all municipalities are complete. Many of them are in the same sort of situation as us, that they're in the middle of, midst of doing budget, and they may be further or earlier in that process. The other thing I think that would be challenging to be able to assess and accurately represent would be the strategies that any particular community employed to arrive at what their percent increase is. You know, certainly in the media, that is a number that's focused on. A stranger that I came from Grand Prairie, so I certainly saw the discussions there recently. That was in the Alberta Municipalities weekly email load, so I was cruising those as I'm sure townsfolk are. In that community, there was about a million dollars of reserves applied to reduce the property tax increase just to reduce. So certainly you see that number, percent increase, but it's actually really the strategies that lie behind how the communities got to those percent increases that probably is it tells a whole other story, you know. And so what was that community struggling with, with a property tax increase before? They applied any strategies to reduce it? Is it a different question that doesn't typically make the media headlines? And would make analysis and sort of straight municipality-to-municipality comparison difficult.
Thank you for that. And I'm sure as we'll reconvene next week, we'll be looking at exactly that. Strategies that we can use to either reduce capital, reviewing what we did add into the budget, and maybe taking a little harder look at things that can we do without for a year? Shall we make adjustments accordingly? And that'll be the challenge, I think, that councillor Demota is bringing up today is that we need to come back with a menu of different options that we can apply to the municipal budget.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm happy to engage in this budget dialogue brought forward by councillor Demota. And dialogue will continue, but debate must also fall. And so next week, we have invited members of the public to come, and that will be a bit of a dialogue, I presume. But I invite councillors now, similar to what councillor Melnick just suggested, to be prepared with options. We last week passed a number of motions, and it seems to me that we are going to be presented in most likelihood with an equal or greater number of motions next week over many of the same subject matters. And it's, it will present a challenge for
it will present a challenge for administration because we've sent them off to prepare a budget based on motions from last week. And I sense that now there will, there may be an appetite to reconsider those and perhaps add others. So I invite councillors to come prepared next week with motions for debate with respect to the budget. And I also invite councillors to consider how we might manage the process in terms of time. We have a one thirty start. I think that councillor Melnick will be making a motion that we extend beyond four hours at some point. But it's going to take us potentially into the evening. And I would like councillors to think about how we might configure things so as to not to keep staff here late into the evening. But I think this budget is going to require some lengthy debate. And it doesn't have to be concluded on Tuesday afternoon next week, but we are going to have to face that particular challenge if what I am sensing from councillors is correct, that there is going to be protracted debate over a number of issues that we've already deliberated on, but have not committed to. So it's going to be a challenging process. And I am concerned that we need the time to do it properly. And it may not be possible to get it all done on Tuesday. So we should be looking ahead.
Thank you. Is the question, is there an option to start our meeting earlier? Like, I don't know if that's allowed or is there appetite at the table to start at nine thirty? Councillor Keller-Emby?
Unfortunately, I have to go for pre-op in West Alphamont's week, which I cannot reschedule. I'm hoping it's a six-hour process that day, that I will be out by one thirty and I can join by phone. I hope you won't start at nine thirty because I will not be part of it. And this could go to the nineteenth. Like if it was to go over, that a decision wasn't made on the fifth, we could make a decision on the nineteenth and everything still starts from January.
Councillor De Mota?
Yeah, there's definitely a debate. That's pretty admirable of you councillor Keller-Emby to to have that much commitment to zoom in on a, or call in on a budget meeting on a surgery day.
It's not surgery, it's just pre-surgery.
Okay, pre-surgery, still, it's still quite a bit. Well, you know, there's a lot to contemplate here and, you know, I just just going off of some of the comments that were made from Tourism Jasper and, you know, contemplating the whole budget and, you know, particularly the comments made on our debt. So one of the biggest reasons why we get so tight, particularly in twenty twenty five, is our commitment to the Arena Activity Centre project and the contribution that we had to make there. And, you know, we saw how quickly things came about when there was the threat of not having any tournaments and how important that building is collectively, but particularly the arena is to commerce in the community. And we took a big step there. You know, and I know there are people in the community, they're going, why aren't we getting two slabs with that kind of money? Well, when you look at what's going on in other areas and the cost of building, it's enormous out there. And it's even more challenging now to get builders to do housing in communities as we're finding out because a lot of the resources are being taken on for bigger projects, either in big cities or bigger communities. So the resources out there are driving those dollars even higher. So, you know, I look at and go, where would we be without paid parking right now? Like if we didn't have that, we'd be looking at a thirty percent increase in our budget just to cover some of those debentures. And I remember in the past when we said, okay, well, what if we just, you know, take Tourism Jasper's recommendation and say to administration, well, we're only gonna go up ten percent and that's what we're capping it, or nine point nine. You know, if we're going to keep it in single digits, then the question's going to come back, well, what services do you want to cut? That will force us into priorities. And, you know, I think that's where the deep root of it is. And I mentioned it earlier. So are we at the position where we can contemplate actually having a priority-based budget to to review the services that we're offering already? Like, is everything necessary? And Mayor Ireland challenged the question. It's like, well, where are we overspending?
Councillor Keller-Emby?
There has been some dialogue in the community about the electric office building for the new buses and the grant. And I have a question for Mr. Given. The grants that we got for five million, is that available to businesses if they were to apply for a grant?
Deputy Mayor Hall for councillor Keller-Emby, the answer is no, is only available to municipalities. So no private sector would be able to access that money and bring it to Jasper.
Thank you for that. Thank you, councillor Keller-Emby. I have been struggling or have thoughts on Mr. Jackson's comments about residential taxes versus commercial taxes. And I think the challenge is when you have these very small businesses renting from the commercial, renting on commercial properties that pay the full amount of taxes. And I don't know really where I want to go with this, but it's, I guess it's just a matter of what are residents willing to pay for? What are commercial, commercial property owners willing to pay for? That's the challenge because we've got these very small businesses renting space that pay triple that. And so they, they take the brunt of these tax increases. I'm just curious what it would look like if we maybe split this tax increase a little, a little more evenly with that effect, the miller rate. I'm just not really sure. This has been kind of going through my head the last week. My own personal property taxes have gone down from last year. So I mean, there is, yeah, I don't, I'm not really sure where to go with this, but it's just been something I've been thinking about. Because I do, I do have concerns about our tiny little businesses renting in in commercial properties.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I can respond to that. You know, if, if there are strategies that council would like administration to consider in advance of next week or sort of to pre-calculate, that's something that we could do. It would be helpful to know what types of strategies council might wish to consider. It will be challenging for administration to sort of calculate it if we will. You know, we'll certainly do our best and be prepared to do what we can. But if there are things that you know now, that, you know, there's a majority of councillors would like us to explore or be prepared to discuss, it'd be helpful to know that now. And the mill rate split on the tax, net tax requisition increase is one of those types of things. If there was a, some consideration of saying, okay, so right now on the existing net tax requisition, it's apportioned out at five to one. What would happen if the increase, whatever that increase ends up being, is apportioned at a one to one ratio? What would the effect of that be? Like, I think that that's the question that you, and I use one to one just as a placeholder, but if that's a question that council's interested in, then, you know, letting us know that in advance at least gives us some time to pull up the Excel spreadsheets and do a bit of pre-calculus. Again, if there are other strategies about, you know, I heard the, what would a, you know, nine point nine percent increase look like? You know, what strategies might be employed to do that? It certainly is easier for administration if we get a bit of a heads up to be able to go away and do that rather than at the table. Because then at the table, we can give council informed recommendations to enable your decision-making. You know, if, if, if next week, somebody comes up with a a strategy and says, well, I think we should apply this by doing X, Y, and Z. It's possible that X, Y, and Z actually aren't possible or don't actually get you the result that you want. Because as I related before, the municipal budget is a pretty layered and complex thing. So if there are things that are on your mind now, by all means, let us know. These could be, and it might be most useful if it comes as motions of direction to administration to prepare. You know, blank, you know. Because that way we can understand, A, if there's a generally consensus among council, that that's something that's worth the effort of building and preparing for. And it would ensure that we have clarity because I can, the discussion, there may be a number of different things raised in the discussion that could have varying degrees of resource requirements to explore them. And so for us to explore everything that's discussed, maybe more challenging and less productive than exploring the things that there's at least a consensus among council that we should explore. So is that helpful? I appreciate that. There is a lot going on. As Mayor Ireland said, we may need more time. And the time that we already do have could be vastly more productive if administration had a bit of a, was able to prepare for some of the concepts that council might want to introduce.
Councillor De Mota?
Well, I appreciate that. And thank you Deputy Mayor and particularly going to the direction of the tax split because I know it's difficult at this time to talk about that, even though we will, we probably won't be debating that until earlier on in the year. You know, and unfortunately, on the non-residential side and even on the residential side, our, our property taxes are inflated. And that has, that has, our assessments are inflated. So that has, you know, a direct proportion on, on you know, how we're going to tax. And but now that we have control over that ratio and, you know, the big buzzword particularly this year is vulnerability. And we've been hearing that in just about every presentation and you know, our decisions are maybe putting residents or commercial business owners in vulnerable positions. So when we look at our priority matrix with our strategic plan and go through, you know, the priorities, being proactive towards putting people in vulnerable spots is number five out of all of our top priorities when it comes down to the scoring in our, in our matrix. So when I'm looking at that and going, okay, well, you know, our commercial assessments are pretty high. And we've seen the trickle down of that. We have an example that was shared with us and from what other business owners and property owners have shared with me and from the non-residential side pretty much match up with the information that we got. And, you know, I've had people tell me that they had a twenty percent increase with their utilities last year overall. And it's not a sustainable path. I'm glad that our utilities are self-correcting now and we've laid that open. How much more of an increase can we keep adding on every year? You know, and what are people going to take? So the biggest challenge, I guess, is you know, the residential side of that equation is where people vote. And the toughest thing to do, I think, sometimes is like to take that big step and say, okay, you know, we got to communicate out there that our residential taxes are pretty low comparatively to other communities. So are we willing to make that shift? Thank you.
I can just comment quickly and then I'll get to you. I'm not necessarily sure I would call all the real video buzzword, but it is absolutely a word we've been using in the community. I'm not, well, I don't want to saddle our residents with higher taxes. I just wonder if they, you know, utilities are paying for utilities now. I, you know, our paid parking goes to specific things. I wonder if a resident knew that, okay, your taxes aren't going up, but we're not going to have this particular service or this particular service. I just wonder what residents are willing, like would be willing to pay for. Councillor Keller-Emby?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm just wondering if council would be interested in this? If we could ask administration to provide like what, based on say a five hundred thousand dollar home is owned, how much your tax is going to go up? Based on like commercial, what your taxes are going to go up? And look at what we put up from twenty one to now. Because if somebody's house goes up thirty bucks a month, we're looking at, let's say, seven hundred, six, ten, you know what I mean? Three hundred and twenty a year, the next year is three twenty, next year is three twenty. Well, that household probably has the same wage. So now instead of, you know what I mean? Like, so now that's nine hundred and something dollars over three years that we're asking in taxes, that household may have a very little increase. So does that mean they're now at the food bank? They're now at the the line for the food, the reusable food that's brought in. You know what I mean? Like, are we creating our own vulnerability with the increase in taxes? And I think that's what we really have to look at. You know what I mean? Like, if our residents want everything, then what, then, then they have to cut. If they need that money to sustain their household, then we may need to cut services. And I know it's a very tough conversation to have. But then our small businesses, when you look at that, the same business that's in that's five hundred thousand dollar budget, they're paying five times to that. And we're hearing that they can sustain. So, you know, you know, everything is nice to have, but can we sustain it?
Thank you for that councillor Keller-Emby. That's where I was, my thoughts were going. We have a comment from councillor De Mota. Your mic is on, was on?
I appreciate that. And, you know, I use the term buzzword just for the simple fact that it was the closest thing that came to my mind. But I mean, it's, it's a topic that we need to pay particular attention on. And it has been addressed in many layers of our budget. And I was just using that to reference the importance of the decisions that we're making and considering that aspect of vulnerability as well. Not just the stuff that's on the surface that's, you know, that we can observe, but the impact of where our budget might put businesses and other members of the community. Because if if we start contemplating shifts, it's going to have an impact on affordability for people on their mortgages as well.
Any other dialogue from council or the mayor? Councillor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Mola. In reference to CEO Given's request for motions, would it be appropriate if we were to make a motion to add additional revenues into parking so that those could be built in at this time? Or is that something that could be done on the day? As well as, for example, bulk water sales, if we have that in the budget already or not? Those are two items where on the revenue side we could add. And then there'll be other opportunities to perhaps reduce expenses and the type of motion, the motions you'd be looking for at this point.
Deputy Mayor Hall for councillor Melnick, yes, exactly those types of things. And it would be, I think it'd probably follow the format, direct administration, prepare information on the impact of blank. And so you can specify what the blank is. You can fill in the blank in that sort of format. And that tells us, again, council isn't directing any change to the budget. We will still show up at the table with the budget as sort of reviewed and amended by committee. And we can have at the table available information about some of the strategies that you might like to employ.
Councillor De Mota?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Through you to Mr. Given. Tourism Jasper made a comment about council. I think the term was council leaving a billion dollars on the table. Or there's an opportunity to explore that billion dollars of revenue and perhaps put that towards the budget. But I'm just wondering if you
I'm just wondering if you understood what was meant by that. And because I I think in my mind, we would just be shifting the, uh, the burden if on a blink. So I I want to, I want to be a little bit more clear on if if you perceive there's an opportunity for an extra million dollars and and how would that uh, pertain to that tax split that Tourism Jasper spoke of or James Jackson in in particular.
Yeah, um, Deputy Mayor Hall for Council, yeah, absolutely. So, um, as I related in the budget presentation, uh, in January of last of this year, I guess it was almost felt like it was last year because it was near the start of this year. Administration brought forward the Tourism Base Communities Report. Um, and that's the information they're referencing. So that's been presented at council. It's been public already in the past. Um, and in that information, it identified that, you know, among thirty three comparator communities, the municipality of Jasper has, uh, I believe, the lowest or second lowest property taxes paid per property. And I just want to be really clear about what that means. Uh, it means that for each parcel, each house, each unit, um, the amount of dollars that we collect is lower. The lowest out of those thirty three communities. So, uh, that actually accounts for the impact of higher assessment. Right? Because we're talking about how much does a property owner actually pay versus what is the mill rate? And, you know, it it controls for the the higher than average assessments here in Jasper. And the report identified that if Jasper was, uh, at the average of those comparative communities, the amount of revenue generated would be approximately one point one million dollars, uh, in additional revenue. And that additional revenue comes from somebody. It comes from property owners. And so it is not, uh, money that would have no consequence on people's property taxes. It is, the implication is if we increased property taxes on residential properties to a level that would be the average across comparative communities. Those residential property taxes would pay approximately one point one million dollars more. Um, and, uh, obviously you'd see a corresponding rate, you know, uh, for that, mill rate for it, to be able to, um, act to act on that. Um, and the other implication is it would, is in essence, have the effect of um, shifting the mill rate ratio from five to one to something less than five to one. Um, and so you, so that's, yeah, that that's what the report said. I mean, it is not, it is not anything that would be additional revenue. It's really about of the revenue the municipality needs, what portion of that is on which part of the tax base.
Exactly. So it's still the, it's still, uh, clear as mud in the grand scheme of things. So technically, we could generate another one point one million dollars just by doing a, uh, a mill rate change? Or would that be shifting it from one sector to another?
Sure. So, uh, Deputy Mayor Hall for Council, yeah, to be a little bit clearer, I guess, council has some choices. You can choose to increase the amount of taxes you collect above. Right now, it's just for argument's sake, say it's one point six million. That was the number after the adjustments last week. So you can collect the one point six million in some ratio other than five to one. Um, and or you can say, okay, we'll collect the one point six million at five to one. And we also want to collect more from residents. So we'll actually collect one point eight million. Because residents paying one hundred percent of that extra two hundred thousand dollars. If that makes, if that makes sense. So it's it's not, it's not new money. Right? Like, it doesn't, it doesn't give you more money, uh, unless you decide that you want to increase the amount of ta- net tax requisition even more.
So basically, I'm just getting this out for clarity because regardless, we have this budget. And with the changes, proposed changes and and the ones that are built in, it resembles X amount, whatever percentage that is. So if you're looking at sixteen percent, even if you go and get another one point one million dollars, that increase is still sixteen percent. Right? It's not changing. So we're not actually, you can take one point one million dollars and then all of a sudden you have to go and look for five hundred thousand dollars from the net tax envelope because you're already increasing the taxes of the residents. So that increase is going to be higher. It's just how much higher. Like, last year, we talked about what it meant per household of, uh, X amount. I think it was eight hundred thousand dollars. But when you flipped it over, it might have been four percent on one side, but it was twenty on the other. And, you know, it's not just five to one sometimes. You know, it just depends on your property assessment as well, right?
CEO Given?
S- sorry, uh, Deputy Mayor Hall, just just one thing. So, I mean, the ratio between residential and non-residential is always five to one. Unless we take any active measures to change that. So the within residential or non-residential classes, the portion of that tax bill that an individual property may pay can change. So, so, so let's say we need to collect a million dollars from residential properties. My portion of that million dollars and Council Devota's portion of that million dollars may change year to year based on the assessments. But that does not change the residential, non-residential ratio. So just a, for the public, to make sure that they're clear about that, um, the the ratio doesn't change based on the the assessments.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. You you sort of invited me. So I will, I will briefly just make some comments. I it is a challenge. Um, but to some extent, it is, it will become a question of shifting vulnerability. Um, there are vulnerable sectors in our community. Um, we've heard lots about, um, business today, particularly small business, but we also have residents, um, who are vulnerable. And I made comments on the labor market study. There's an indication in there. It's not specific to Jasper, but traveler accommodation in Alberta has increased forty percent since December of twenty twenty one. I don't know where our local, um, market is in that respect, but I do know that non-residential assessments are based on income. And if income is is increasing, um, then the assessed value goes up. Um, for residential property taxes, um, market value may be increasing, but that doesn't mean that there is any extra income in the pockets of homeowners. Um, so if you talk about shifting burden, um, recognize that um, income is not shifting in the same, in the same way. And so homeowners are vulnerable and we may make them more vulnerable. Uh, we heard from the labor market study just how difficult it is to recruit labor in the community because of housing. And there are lots of young people in our community who are, I think, abandoning any prospect of remaining in their home community because they simply cannot afford to live here. They can't, they'll never afford a house and they 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 don't have a prospect. And do we make them more vulnerable and how does that affect the community? These are discussions that need to come, but there are, at the end of it, I go back to a discussion that we had here years ago, um, and got nowhere because the province isn't interested. But property tax is probably the worst way for any municipality to fund itself. Um, we pushed for years for a consumption tax, um, for our community. We have visitors coming and a small tax on consumption would aid us considerably in paying for the services we provide, including that thirty two percent of our expenditures that are focused on visitor-facing infrastructure and services. Consumption tax follows income and spending. It seems to me to be so much more equitable in this situation that we're currently in. And I would invite us to again, advocating, um, with our municipal colleagues, um, to the province to to look at that. We're doing it on our own to get some sort of, um, permission in Jasper to to institute a local consumption levy. Um, I note with interest, for example, and, um, Mr. Riebel mentioned it today, that the destination marketing fee is increasing by fifty percent. It's going from two percent to three percent effective January first. That is a fifty percent increase. That's not us. That's somebody else in the community sees an opportunity. Um, consumption taxes could help entirely in this issue. This property tax vortex that we're stuck in will never produce equity as far as I'm concerned and will always leave some more vulnerable than others. Um, so a different discussion, I recognize, than what we're entering into now. But I I just leave that for thought for counselors as we progress. First with the budget discussion next week and thereafter with, um, the tax rates question.
Counselor Devota.
All right. I I just, I don't think people like the term consumption tax. I mean, it's just, it's a basic form and that's what it's called. Um, that transaction, I guess, is basically what it is. But just, um, in your mind, your worship through you, Deputy Mayor, um, when you use the term consumption tax, is like, um, we look at the tourism levy, for an example, and that increase of fifty percent in in your mind, is we, is that a type of levy that's based on consumption? Is is that itself a consumption tax? So again, so maybe, you know, I guess there are softer terms for it. I don't know. I just, I know that last time that we went around with that one, it it created a little bit of a a spirit. Anyway, I'm I'm interested in exploring everything, but I think now more than ever, particularly with the people, the communities that have been advocating with us, uh, I think we need to really put pressure on taking it to the next level and whether that meets more media um, coverage or, uh, start building our champions. Cause I I think in our initial discussions with BAF and pursuing this and having Whistler come and present to us, that was the 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 big key component on Whistler getting their resort municipality status was taking the next step in building champions and and getting people on board. And, you know, from what I heard, Tourism Jasper, there there seems to be an appetite to to support that indirectly. I I'm not sure. That's kind of the gist of what I got and part of that, um, report today. Um, I think that we need to get out to other agencies and and really help us boost our opportunity to fund alternate sources of revenue, whether they're called a consumption tax or not. With this path is not sustainable right now. We're we're hitting some really really tight margins where it comes to hard that. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland.
Just for interest, I I did make mention to the presenters of the labor market study. Um, the GDP for Jasper, um, two hundred and forty six million dollars of spending in our community. Imagine if the municipality was entitled to one percent of that as as a levy. Um, people come to our community, um, we provide as as again, as the earlier presentation from Tourism Jasper indicated, the destination is the product. We provide a good part of the product, um, for the public. Um, if we had just a slitter of that GDP, we wouldn't be having this discussion at all.
Thank you for that. Um, Counselor Milik, you had earlier, you alluded to central motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I'll make an attempt and, uh, we can then debate the following. Um, I'd like to make the motion that committee, um, direct administration to prepare calculations that would add one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to parking revenues for presentation at the next, um, council meeting.
There is a motion on the table. Is there any debate to the motion? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I just have a question for Counselor Milik. Um, have you done any napkin-style calculations, um, on your own to come up with the hundred and fifty thousand or to just just start there? And and what I'm wondering is, um, what that might mean in in terms of increase in in rate and whether it might be um, advisable if we're going to suggest that, to suggest a a rate increase rather than, um, a a global quantity increase.
Thank you, uh, for the question. I I anticipated that part of what would be coming back to us would be that there would be a recommendation for, to achieve that. Um, it also would be good to take a look at what the actual parking revenue was for twenty twenty three. I know that we've put a million dollars into the budget. Um, and that may have been based on us getting close to a million dollars this year. Um, so this is, um, you know, it may be, uh, that we're we're going to be increasing by twenty five cents of the hourly rate in the lots. That I, that's up to administration, I think, to do that. But it gives us, um, another opportunity to then have revenue to then use, uh, against the the increase. Plus, I would anticipate that we'll be going back to the different motions and and, uh, perhaps rescinding some of those motions, removing some of the things that we approved in the budget or to be included in the budget.
Counselor Devota.
Well, you know, I I do have an another approach too, and it's adversarial in nature. Um, it goes back to something we practiced before and and it it stems from my personal frustration from when I'm getting automatic commercials because I don't pay for the extra YouTube cost and, you know, I'm forced to watch these things or when I'm watching a hockey game. That Parks Canada is actively advertising with Jasper, maybe as a whole with with other areas in Canada, but there is marketing to bring people here. And we get nothing in return. And we get taxed on our land rent. And from what Richard, uh, alluded to in in an anecdotal scenario, it's like charging an usher in a movie theater is that usher gets to watch the movie. So uh, we're in a similar scenario. And I'm like, well, if you're going to continue to advertise and bring people here and put pressure on our infrastructure, we don't pay land rent. You know, and I know that we're in negotiations to potentially take that off our plate, but I don't know what else to do. Like, I mean, we need to find money somewhere. And if they're going to keep bringing people here and inviting people to come to the park and there aren't a lot of places to go shopping, eat or use the bathroom. And that takes a lot of burden on our community. And, you know, regardless of thirty two percent or thirty three percent of our our actual budget going towards tourism, they're they're part of the the, um, invitation to come here as well as Tourism Jasper and everybody else, but they're not really participating in what that means to our business owners and our residents. I think that we need to to take some other measures to to help that situation. I don't know. It sounds adversarial, but what else do we do? We did it before. What kind of position does that put us in with our partners though?
Thank you for that. Uh, there is a motion on the table. I would support the motion even being higher, but I will, I do support the motion as it is. Um, if I'm living in a national park, it comes with a very unique set of challenges where the forty two hundred residents that live here support the two million that come through every year and use all of our infrastructure. And this is literally the only way they directly pay for it. One fifty is a good start. Question for administration, are we three fifty an hour on the street and two fifty an hour in the parking lot? I'm ju- just to refresh my memory.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I'm a local. I don't pay, so I don't know. I I would actually have to look and see. I just don't have that top of mind. I was certainly can find that just to sort of minutes notice, but that's information that we could bring back next week.
Thank you for that, and I I know my story, all the stories we share, we travel around and we we pay to park in in various places, and it's always seems to be a lot higher than. We charge here. We're not year round parking yet. So again, I support this motion. Probably next week when it comes back, I might. Friendly amended to be higher because I think, again, this is the only way our visitors directly pay for the infrastructure they use.
Deputy Mayor Hall, just say thanks to my team. Yes, you've got the numbers right. So does Google.
Is there any other debate on the motion? Administration has the motion. Do you want to read? Counselor Melick, can you repeat the motion?
And I would like to repeat the motion as the committee. Direct administration. To prepare calculations. That would add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to parking revenues in twenty twenty four.
Thank you for that. I will. I'm Mayor Ireland.
I asked a question earlier, so I I I will speak. I. I will support the motion. To me, though, that sounds like. A fifteen percent increase. And so. Based on your comments. Deputy Mayor Hall, I would support potentially something higher as well, but it gives. An opportunity for administration to come back with something and reconsider it. Again, but maybe we're talking about a million dollars and going up another hundred and fifty. In general terms, that seems to be where it is, and a fifteen percent increase be appropriate, I think, that. The market is certainly prepared to. Are able to absorb. More than that, and we certainly have the need. So I will vote in favor of the motion, but more debate to come.
Counselor Waxer.
I was part of what the mayor said. I had I made motion, I would have made the number higher and. But I will vote in in favor of it because we have the ability then to. Get the information and look at something different.
I think Tourism Jasper is increasing their levy by fifty percent. Maybe. We could increase her anyways. Any other debates? I will call the question all in favor. And that motion is carried. Are there any other motions coming out of this budget dialogue? Counselor DeMotta.
Like to thank everybody for the time and on the agenda for this, and I think it's been productive and hopefully that'll give us a. A cleaner step to to next week or an easier step.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Counselor Keller, you had. Earlier talked about maybe getting some statistics or some information. Did you want to make a motion to that?
That committee direct administration to bring some slides to the council meeting next week indicating the. Home of five hundred thousand, how that would impact taxes and commercial property of five hundred thousand. How that will. Impact taxes. And if possible. To show over the last three years, the increase.
Thank you for that, Counselor Keller. Administration is a motion. Clear I C C A given or writing down right quickly. Counselor DeMotta, you had your hand up.
Just for clarity on the motion, is that per five hundred thousand or properties based on that number is?
Based on that number. So like, say, you know, because then it kind of goes up, you know, you know, houses for five hundred thousand, this is. Houses, maybe we can all still win a million. Like, we've had these sites in the past. I think the right launch would have them.
Yeah, I just, I'm seeing really low for sides. I was just wondering.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Somewhere in the old humanist information that we've received over the last. Couple of weeks. I'm sure there is. A graph that shows that. I think fifty seven percent of residential properties. Are valued at. Eight hundred thousand dollars or less, and then there's there's different. Increments. And it seems to me that some of this information has already been provided. At least to council, if it's not clearly in the public realm. It it was a slightly different approach. And I think because. Nobody owns the average home and typically we've tried to get an average price and again, I think in the. In the labor market study, they they've used that again, and it's eight hundred and some thousand dollars is average, but that's because. The average is skewed. It includes. Residential properties at Lake Edith, for example, but it also includes co-op housing. So it's hard. So the the approach that administration, I think, took this year was. To segment. Based on. Broader values, which I I found to be helpful. I I don't mind if. They do some extra work based on the motion before us. If if that's not too much of a task, I'll I'll support the motion. But that that information is available in in somewhat. Different format, and I I thank administration for having already provided that, but I I will support. The motion to. Present it again in a slightly different format.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. I'm just looking to see, given, is that clear? On your end?
Deputy Mayor Hall, I guess it is. So the motion is specific. We'll provide that specific information, and then we can also provide the information the mayor is referencing. That was, I think, provided. Maybe separately to council or at least it was in development with administration because we. Wanted to get a sense of of what the impact would be, but of course, we didn't know what that number was, and so sharing that in advance was. Might have been a bit misguided, and so it might not have been widely seen. We can certainly bring that information as well. So that council can see what the impact is on the majority of properties and get a bit better sense of that.
Thank you for that. Any debate on the motion? I will call the question all in favor. And that motion is carried. Is there anything else coming out of budget dialogue? Counselor DeMotta.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, just because I've had difficulty finding it. Last week during the first presentation at budget, right off the top, Mr. Given, through you Deputy Merrill. You were presenting the service profile SLT evaluation tables, and you'd mentioned that they were slightly different. And when I looked at the numbers, they were adjusted. Did we get a copy of that? I I in the presentation, when I was viewing it, that. It looked like the new numbers were there, but I wasn't able to find an updated table that reflected the presentation. So. And is that also available to, like, on the municipal website?
Deputy Mayor Hall, there was a minor recalculation that administration caught in coming in. I think we had a bit of a discussion about that, just sort of the comparison, the year over year change. There were a couple that went down, and we had a discussion about. The one that is on the municipality's website is still the uncorrected version. I think we handed out a copy to council in council chambers and emailed around. And so we have not updated that one on the municipality's website. We could certainly. Ensure that that page, actually, we would ensure that that page is updated with. When we publish the agenda this Friday.
It doesn't really change things all that much, but. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on? Our budget dialogue? It's like we're. We're going to wrap this conversation up. Mayor Ireland, you look. You're thinking very good. I want to thank council for this conversation. This has been great. And. At this time, I know Mr. Dell has been waiting patiently, but I'm going to have to call a lunch. Break. So it is twenty minutes to one, so I would like to recess until one forty. Welcome back, everybody, council and members of the public. We are going to dive right in. To new business agenda item seven point two. Our community and economic development fund policy review. We have Lisa Redelker, manager from community development, to speak to this.
Okay, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor Hall and all of council. The community and economic development fund policy. Report is in front of you. It was first adopted by council October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. And it provides for the policy. Governance, how the community and economic development fund is administered, and the fund provides financial support to projects that help advance either community or economic development within that town. It's been, policy's been in place for a year now, and we've been able to have two different intakes to kind of see how things are going. There was a total of eleven organizations that have applied over the last two intakes. And on October tenth, committee directed administration to bring the policy to a future committee meeting for review. The existing policy is attached for reference. Administration did take a look through the policy and has one recommendation that you see reflected in the recommendation on the report. And that's to change the eligibility requirements to exclude a group that has received municipal funding in the current calendar year. And the intention here is just that groups that already have an opportunity to request funding through the budget process. Are more than welcome to include any of these great ideas. In their ass, which they already go through a budget time, and that the community and economic development fund is a pretty small scale. Fund that's a great entry point for other organizations in the community that may not receive municipal funding. The other thing to note is in the discussion section, administration took note of a variety of themes that came out of. The conversation at the council level over the last two intakes. And just listed in bullet form a couple of questions council may or may not wish to consider. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dell. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm getting tired. Just looking at this, I do like the idea that groups that receive funding from the budget. Don't go back again because it allows, it's a very small fund and allows other. Groups. I do like the idea of individuals being allowed to come. So we have somebody like say that I'm going to use. Hockey star that goes and takes a coaching course. And wants to give back to. The young kids or the new settlements, people of our new immigrants. That if they wanted to take a course, we have done that in the past. Where they guarantee that they do so many community hours to work. With our community members. I think something like that is worth constantly.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Counselor DeMotta.
I do have a question. Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, to Ms. Redell. I appreciate the the recommendation on the things, the eligibility on that item. What? Did the the conversation, did a conversation revolve around, you know, one of the the requirements being. A group governed by a democratically elected board of directors. And how would that? Impact applications that you might see for entering into this agreement with the space value?
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor DeMotta. Any existing policy? Eligibility requirements, groups need to be a registered non-for-profit or nonprofit. Organization and need to have a democratically elected board of directors. And so in the discussion section of the report, we did itemize that as bullet number two. Prompting council, I think it's what I'm hearing from you, to consider whether council would like to receive applications from not-for-profit private corporations. This is different from what's allowable now. These would be privately owned companies. And they have a board of directors, but the board of directors is appointed, not democratically elected. So some local examples are Habitat for the Arts, the Uplift Merrill Festival, and Community Futures West Yellowhead. And that is just up for council's discussion.
Yeah, I think that's, it was there, but I just, I guess maybe you just. But I think it'd be unfair to ask, so never mind. Thanks.
C A O given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Just, you know, per council's information, so this was a request from council to come back. The request for it to come back was with no other direction. It just was, hey, bring this back. Okay, here it is. So administration was sort of in the position of saying, well, what? Would be helpful to council to help the decision making. And so Mr. Dell really captured, I think, some of the questions that administration heard council discussing at the last committee meeting when we were dealing with the award of of monies from the fund. And in looking at it. The only one that seemed to be. I think direct and and clear and sort of actionable without significant discussion and really changing policy. Was the eligibility requirement to exclude, you know, so that idea of double dipping, and and certainly not with any malintention, many of the organizations that want to try to support their great works and great events. But that was the one that administration could see, okay, well, this is probably the one recommended thing that we can foresee, you know, that a pretty straightforward way to implement that. The others were. Really a reflection, the other points are a reflection of what we heard at the council table, but we weren't sure council wanted to act on them or not. Some of them are less clear. And so they're there really just as a reflection of of the discussion that we captured from the council table. Council isn't under any obligation to make any changes to policy. Say, no, you know what? On reflection, it's totally fine. No changes needed. That alternative is the record, or if there are other additional changes that you wish to do, you can also make that, you know, via motion here. But we are looking first in direction is, is the policy good as it is? Would you like to accept the recommendation from administration for change, or are there other changes that you'd like to direct administration to make?
Counselor DeMotta.
Well, I guess throwing out a council, and I know that there might be a little bit of a conflict with one of the particular things, but this on a philosophical. Perspective like regardless of the. The dental applicants in in an area there or. These other agencies or call them groups. What like, how does council feel about, you know, what we've seen as presentations and, you know, then seeing that? People have limited access to this, and then all of a sudden, there's kind of like the workaround to come and present that council for funding, right? So. Is that what we intend on doing? Or want to promote in the future is that the whole concept behind this? Like, if you don't fit into this bracket, come to council anyway. Or do we want to? Try to focus as many groups to this fund as possible. I'm just throwing it out there for conversation.
Counselor Keller.
The fund is still limited. It's only ten thousand dollars. So I think anybody that's. Looking for any amount of money, about a thousand or two, they're not going to get it from this one, so they're going to end up coming to council anyway. This doesn't fit in, doesn't fit for them.
Just a comment on that conversation. I'm reading in this administration. It allows for confidence, confidence in our partnerships as a robust democratic process. I'm kind of reading into that as. It's like the beginning steps of applying for a grant. Like, it's not, you're right, it's not a lot of money, but it allows groups to learn a process. How to how to apply for money. Am I? Interpreting that. Statement correctly? C A O.
Well, I think the the intent there is to say, is to ask the question, really. Well, I think the intent there is to say, is to ask the question really of council. What is the standard of ability for the community to get involved? And so this idea of a democratically elected, maybe is an overly fancy term, but, you know, an elected board of directors. In, you know, in a not-for-profit society world, there would be in any general meeting, somebody who is a member of the society could let their name stand to be a member of the board and, you know, could, could get elected to the board to have influence in how the organization runs. Same is not true for individuals. And it's also not true for corporations, corporate boards, you know, any one of us couldn't decide to become a member of the corporation and advocate for change within the organization, try to get your name on the, on the, on the board. And so that's, I think, the question that's in front of council is, is that, is that an important principle or not? And, you know, it really kind of can go either way. I think if council is satisfied with the process and the applications that came forward this time around, no problem. We can leave the policy as it is. If council would like to see some changes, then, you know, that's one option.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And I appreciate the reports and directing council to those various questions, and I understand why they remain unanswered. I support the one recommendation to disentitle groups that have already received funding from applying again. From a personal perspective, I would say yes to each of the other questions that have been posed in the report. I think it's more important that we turn our minds to the use of the funds rather than the structure of the applicant. And so we are dealing with, we choose, and I think we should reconsider a negative term, not-for-profit. These are typically organizations or individuals interested in contributing to social profit or community enhancement. And I think that we should perhaps recognize that. It's also possible to have a registered for-profit corporation that is interested in simply social contribution, so whatever profit is rolled back in. They are not always profitable. The reason principally to incorporate as a not-for-profit is taxation. But you could be a for-profit regular corporation in the province that is committed to community enhancement and social endeavors. And I'm not sure why we, we would choose categorically to exclude them. So I would, I would like to see us revisit the policy from the perspective of what is the activity that we are trying to encourage? And I think, and as we saw in the earlier presentation today from Tourism Jasper, there is an opportunity to enhance what again is called the nonprofit sector in our community, recognizing that we need that social element to achieve outcomes in this town. So I, I would say yes to all of those, including individuals. And I know in the past that they're small amounts, but an individual might come forward looking for just a bit of money to take a referee's course or something that they can then be better positioned to contribute to the community through whatever manner they might want to do. It could be coaching, it could be refereeing or anything. And so I don't see a need to exclude individuals if the end goal is to make an investment into community, to the welfare of the community. So I would, I appreciate the work that's been done and I support the one change. But I would invite council to go further and reconsider our, our policy and maybe look at a wording change as well to get rid of not-for-profit and start talking about social investment from individuals or agencies in the community. This question democratically elected, again, a society can be very small, just a couple of members is all you need. But it might be those two or three individuals who are the spark of something. And to say that they're not entitled to funds because they self-appointed as the only members of the society to also be the directors seems to limit opportunities for sort of grassroots development in the community. So I appreciate the report and think that it gave us an opportunity to reconsider how we might want to adapt, which is admittedly a pretty small fund in the overall budgetary process.
Councilor Waxer.
Well, I was going to say that I agree with the mayor because I'm reflecting on some of the presentations we've heard this year. And three of the most compelling presentations were around, from individuals talking about the Snakes Hill Project, the Men's Shed Project, and the Community Stage. So there, those are projects that people may not choose to, to start a not-for-profit society to get off the ground, but are worthy, are worthy projects and will make the community a better place to live.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Waxer. Any other questions or comments from the table? Councilor Demota?
I, I agree with, with what both the mayor and Councilor Waxer stated. And I'm willing to support some of those changes if they, if they could be beneficial for the community as well.
Thank you for that. Looking for some more questions or comments or potentially a motion or two. Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. It sounds like there needs to be two motions here or one motion with two parts. One being that the that if a group had received money in the current year, then they would be excluded. And then to add the various groups in the, that would be eligible that currently are not. If I'm reading or if I'm hearing that correctly from everyone's discussion.
I think you are. Do you have a motion ready, Councilor Melnick? Or does somebody want to start with the easy one of directing administration to change the eligibility requirements to exclude any group that has received municipal funding in the current calendar year? I want to make that motion. Councilor Keller-Harambeau, would you like to make that motion?
Sure.
That country received the report for information and directed administration to change the eligibility requirement to exclude any groups that have received municipal funding in the current calendar year.
Thank you for your motion. Is there any debate on the motion? Council, okay. I see no debate. I will call a question, all in favor. And that is carried. C O Given.
Deputy Mayor Hall, on the second, maybe I can assist council a bit. I think, based on the nature of the discussion, amendments that you could consider would be under the applicants area of the policy. You, rather than adding anything, I think it's actually striking out a few things. So under applicants, it says funding will be granted to organizations that meet these requirements and follow these practices. First bullet is registered as not-for-profit organization. That could be struck. The third bullet is governed by democratically elected board of directors. That could be struck. And then if you go into the next section, it says the following types of organizations or programs are ineligible for funding. And it says, the first bullet is for-profit organizations or ventures. And the second says nonprofit organizations sponsoring for-profit organizations. It's just this, those would, and then perhaps the addition of saying funding will be granted to organizations or individuals. So that might be the most direct way of getting at what I think the conversation was, was to open it up as broadly as possible to as wide a range of applicant as possible. And I think those deletions and maybe that one addition, verify that individuals are also welcome to apply, would get at what I think I heard of the discussion at the council table.
Thank you for your help on that one. So if I'm hearing correctly, a motion could potentially amend the applicants to take out registered as a nonprofit organization. That and the third governed by democratically elected board of directors, that would be in the first. And to remove the first and second additions and the ineligible for funding, the non-for-profit organizations or ventures or nonprofit organizations sponsoring for-profit organizations. And to add individuals.
And then to add individuals would be under, in the first sentence, under applicants, saying funding will be granted to individuals or organizations.
Would anybody like Mayor Ireland's?
Did we just pass a motion about? Yeah, because it seems to me that we could, we could have just added under ineligible ability those who have already received funding. But if we've already dealt with that, that's fine. And otherwise, I would be prepared to make a motion along the lines suggested or along the lines, but to replicate, but Mr. Given has said about the changes. But I want to get some clarity on my counterpoint. Is it one that talks about organizations whose program fall within the legislative mandate of other governments or municipal departments? And just get clarity on what we think we mean by that. Particularly other governments. So again, we've had and have now the current issue of Evergreen. So there are agencies and others that applies that answer to some other level of government, but they are not the government. But they're agencies of another government. But that, I guess, is an organization whose program falls within the legislative mandate of another government. But is that what we intend to exclude? And have we done with it?
Other question for the table or administration?
Ultimately for council. I, I was struck by the wording of that statement when I was preparing. And I'm not entirely certain that we have captured our intent. And if we have, I'm not sure that we've exercised it.
C O Given.
I, I think Deputy Mayor Hall to Mayor, I think, George, you're probably right. I'm not exactly sure that the intent of that is clear. And if we look at, you know, these policies and programs as iterative processes where we change them based on what we see. This hasn't been a problem yet. So maybe we leave that one there until we find out that it restricts us from doing something that we'd like to do. And then council could say, okay, well, now we see how this comes into play, and that wasn't what we intended. But certainly through, I don't believe that came into play in the first couple of rounds of evaluation and submissions. So I don't know that there's a, although I agree that the term isn't exactly clear, the intent, I would say that it hasn't prevented us from being able to consider any applications at this stage.
Thank you for that. And I am, I'm content with an iterative process. They all seem to be that way anyway. So I would make a motion then that committee direct administration to revise policy B one-one-seven under part three standards by removing bullet number one and two under applicants and adding as a separate bullet individuals and to amend the listing of organizations or programs ineligible for funding to delete the first two bullets. Now, is there another part? That's all that was required there, just the first two bullets, I think.
Thank you for the motion. There is a motion on the table. Is there any debate on the motion? And does administration understand the motion? Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And did we capture that the funding would be granted to individuals and organizations? I think that was the one thing that we didn't include yet was add individuals.
I did you? Yeah, delete two and add one under applicants is what I said. So delete one and three and add an additional one to capture individuals.
And the motion is clear to council? Okay, I will call the question, all in favor. And they're not opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Dell, for bringing that to us. And we're going to move on to agenda item seven point three. You're up again, the land acknowledgement policy review.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall and all of council. Back on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, municipal council adopted this land acknowledgement policy, which outlines our approved approach to the utilization of a land acknowledgement within the organization. And the policy really is also an educational tool that helps us better understand our commitment to truth and reconciliation, the purpose of using a land acknowledgement. And the statement was collaboratively developed and approved together with influence and input from our indigenous partners that we're connected with, as well as the Indigenous Relations Team at Parks Canada. And when we developed the policy, we knew this was a living document and that it would change as we continued along the path of reconciliation. So since the policy was first adopted in two thousand twenty-one, we've continued to work closely with Parks Canada's Indigenous Relations Teams. And we've gotten to know several indigenous partners just this past year with a history of an ongoing connection to this land. And with this experience, administration recommends the amendment of the policy. We've listed under the discussion section four proposed additions. One is the Asinawachi Niawa for the Kelly Lake Cree Nation, for the Rocky Mountain Cree. We learned from this group in our recent training that because they did not take treaty, they are not represented in the current acknowledgement as it stands. And we spoke with Shelley Calio on behalf of the community, who explained that it would be nice of us to mention that specifically, the policy. The next proposed addition is the Asinawachi Winawak Nation. This is the group that was removed from the park and settled near Grand Cash. Administration spoke with the AWN president, David McPhee, who explained that they believe that adding AWN to the land acknowledgement specifically would be much appreciated by their community. The Mountain Métis, this group identifies specifically with this region, although Métis refers to quite a large group in, in Canada. Mountain Métis refers specifically to Jasper and has a connection here. And so to honor that distinction, administration has proposed the addition of Mountain Métis alongside Métis in the acknowledgement. And finally, the Jasper House Métis District. So this is the most current name. So when the park was created, Métis people were forcibly removed. And they moved into areas like Etzen, Rob, Marlborough, Hinton, and Grand Cash. So we spoke with Kayla Mitchell, the Jasper House Métis District elected official. And she helped us better understand that we want to, you know, specifically mention the Jasper House Métis District. Because not all Métis groups operate under the Métis Nation of Alberta. And we proposed two deletions. Um, we thought it could be a great idea to eliminate the English names, but include the background in the policy. And the rationale for that is that um just simply taking the time to try and pronounce and learn the names um in the different indigenous languages is a really meaningful act and a step towards truth and reconciliation. The policy itself acts as a guiding document and supports that learning of anyone who wants to use the land acknowledgement in their work using these names. And myself and uh Jenna McGrath are happy to also act as resources in that. And we proposed the deletion of treaty six only because the actual town boundary is not within treaty six. So again, it's just that educational piece. I think when we first started, we just um copied. Uh, you know, that Jasper National Park and the town of Jasper are in treaty six and treaty eight. And then as we've come on this path, truth and reconciliation, I think we're at a point now where we can be like, okay, this is where the town is and the park is involved. Um, for example, the Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge is only in treaty eight. So it's this learning kind of opportunity, I think, for us. So the relevant legislation is listed there. It's linked to several of council strategic priorities to continue reviewing and utilizing this policy. And there's several relevant inclusion considerations when we think of our path of truth and reconciliation. Um, so again, there's no guarantee that this wouldn't change and continue to be updated along the way, but this is the work administration has done to date, and I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dell. Other questions from counsel? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Mr. Dell, for the for the report and the effort that's gone into it. Specific to the question of um treaty six. My concern is that, in fact, municipality does fall on treaty six land. The municipality is much broader than the town, and so we typically think of municipality as the localized jurisdiction. But Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge that you referenced, um, it was is in the boundary of the municipality and pays taxes. Um, so to specifically exclude treaty six, um, I think makes things less good rather than than better. Um, so I I have a concern about that. Um, I'm also interested in whether um a more generalized approach was considered. Um, so I appreciate um the initiative to add um two particular indigenous groups um and refine the messaging around the Maiti. But with the knowledge that Parks has perhaps twenty six different um members of the indigenous forum. I wonder whether if we're changing the policy and the land acknowledgement, we might be better served to be less specific and more general and just recognize that the municipality of Jasper is on land, which is the traditional territory of indigenous and Maiti people and then give the reason for the acknowledgement. It it just seems to me that as you said, and as Mr. Given said earlier, this is an iterative process and we will adapt and change, but it seems to me we could take a very large step forward um by being more general rather than anticipating that over time we will continually add. So I I don't know whether the the discussion prior to presenting the the review focused on any of that, but I'm I'm interested in your views, whether that is a direction you might go.
Mr. Dell, I'd like to follow up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through to Mayor Ireland. Um, this was definitely something that came up in discussion. Um, I think at this point in time, um, this proposed revision of the policy is reflective of the conversations we've had with the groups that we've built relationship with. Um, and that while several of the indigenous partners that we do work with would feel included in, for example, the reference Cree. There's a few that don't. So um to your point about there being, you know, twenty six or plus indigenous partners that Jasper National Park liaises with. Um, not all of those groups would perceive to not be included in some of the other more general terms that are in the land acknowledgement. So uh at this point, the recommendation is reflective of conversations that we have had around that topic. Um, that's not to say that this process won't result in something different or the pendulum swinging back in another direction in the future, but I think right now, um, things that I've heard are more so around the worry about pan-indigenization or making it super general when we think about or refer to indigenous groups. And so right now, this is a reflection of where we are, I think, on this path.
Counsel Wexler?
I was really struck by your comment about learning to properly pronunciate the uh the names uh is is a significant step in truth and reconciliation. I thought that was interesting and and meaningful. Thank you for that.
Counsel DeBota?
Yeah, I just um comment on the Jasper House Maiti District as well. Um, and I know it wasn't intentional and I'm not even sure, but I I do know of at least one individual that has uh ties that moved to their family moved into Brue or although there are some uh town sites or or um areas that are between Hinton and and Grand Cash. You can encapsulate them all, but I just thought I'd bring attention to that as well. Not that that needs to be put in here because um it says areas like these.
Any more comments or questions for Mr. Dell? Counsel?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, just even having some recent interaction with the Semcanaian, um, they're on um a path of of reaching north or out this way to up to to Grand Cash because they they do have some members of of family that have relocated over time and uh and that is part of that being in our and us being in their uh traditional territories as well.
I'm wondering if I have in anybody wanting to ready to make a motion? More discussion, Counsel Wexler?
Not so much to make a motion quite yet, but I was curious about the removal of the English names. And I was looking at this, is that the the words that are in in quote or in uh para? Like Beaver, uh Ojibwe, those are the words. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Counsel Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, through you to Mr. Dell. Um, would there be any harm in leaving treaty six in to cover on uh all the areas since um we could as a municipal um representative be speaking in many places in the park, not just at the Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge, but potentially um at an event that may be celebrating um uh celebrating an event at Moline Lake or up at the turnway. And having that in there at least um ensures that we do cover um all of the areas. Uh, in fact, I don't even know if the term we would be in if we were outside of the two rivers, which which territory we would be in.
Counsel Hall for um Counsel Melnick. Or Deputy Mayor Hall for Counsel Melnick, there would be no harm. Uh, of course, I think administration, thank you to Mayor Ireland for pointing that out about the Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge and that they could be considered within the town site. Uh, our intention was simply to think we really thought about that when we were looking at the actual parameters and the dividing line is the Athabasca River. So on this side of the river. Anyways, there'd be no harm in leaving it in and I can see the relevance of leaving it in. So absolutely, it's up to counsel.
Uh, Counsel Wexler?
So I'm ready for the motion that that committee recommend counsel adopt the revised land acknowledgement policy. However, maintain the treaty six uh mentioned.
Thank you for the motion. There is a motion on the table. Is there any debate? On the motion, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, to speak in favor of the motion and I I referenced Jasper Park Lodge just because that was a reference to me by this real, but significantly the indigenous site at the Moline River is on the opposite side of the Athabasca River. That is treaty six territory and if we are invited again to speak to indigenous people at that site, I think it would be most appropriate to acknowledge in our land acknowledgement that treaty six is within municipal jurisdictions. I support the motion.
Thank you for that. Any other comments about the motion to me? Everyone understands the motion, administration? Great, I will call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed and that motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Dell, for coming and being patient over lunch hour and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business agenda items seven point four, the traffic advisory committee recommendations. Lead Director Greathed is here to speak to this. Be the part.
Uh, good afternoon, counsel. Um, I'm here uh reporting on the traffic advisory committee. Um, uh, as a background, between July and September this year, committee raised a number of issues related to transportation and road safety matters. These included the cannot drive crosswalk locations and the number of them. Um, bus parking, uh, so that's by Burr and Patricia Street. And uh three-way stop uh being installed at the intersection of Kiki Street and Hazel. On October, on October third, the traffic advisory committee, uh, which is comprised of various municipal managers uh and directors from bylaw and fire operations and protective services. Uh, we held a meeting to discuss um to discuss this concerns raised by the committee. So um I've outlined the three concerns there regarding cannot uh cross uh I cannot drive crosswalks due to the reduced uh speed limit of thirty kilometers an hour, uh, the configuration of a crossbox. Um, and the locations we uh figure are adequate. I know that there was a specific request about adding one towards um the far end by the bicycle park. We did uh spend some time reviewing that one. And after um, you know, uh, a brief period of a lot of activity at that bicycle park, as when a new facility is installed, there's a lot of interest, but it is um not being as heavily um used or um at the same time. And so we didn't notice any concerns um specifically on that one. So no changes are recommended at this time. And uh the issue should be referred to and update to the tra- uh transportation master plan. Regarding the Patricia Street uh bus parking zone. Um, while we uh saw that there might be uh several benefits of relocating the stop, given the um complex nature of the use of Patricia Street. Um, significant consultation and public engagement should be taken before any consideration or any change is considered. And while the majority of the tack uh group supported the relocation of the bus stop, uh, we found out uh every other relocation would be problematic. So after discussion with the C A O, uh, no recommendations are um uh made at this time, and we uh suggest again that that um concern gets uh raised when uh with the development of the transportation master plan. Uh, Kiki Street and Hazel by uh adding uh and making that three-way stop. Um, our reasoning is that we're following provincial legislation regarding to the signage. And that intersection is conforming to the provincial standards. Now, the additional third stop sign uh is not required or hamper trap below in this area. Measures that would exceed uh provincial standard or address unique site conditions should be evaluated with the assistance of additional technical expertise. And again, no changes um to that intersection are recommended from the uh traffic advisory committee. And this issue should be referred to as an update to the traffic uh transportation master plan. Um, so therefore, um, administration's recommendation is the committee received this for uh for information. And um uh there's the alternative if uh this hasn't been looked at thoroughly enough, um, counsel can direct administration to come by uh to the future committee of the hall with additional information. And that's all I have about this one.
Thank you, Director Greathed, for your words. Looking for questions from uh Counsel DeBota?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, uh through you to Mr. Greathed. Um, I appreciate um the work that the group has done and uh I don't, I'm I'm doing my process of um just asking for the sake of asking, I guess. Um, the, when you identified the uh benefits of relocating the Patricia Street bus parking zone, was the uh section area that's closed off to general parking uh right in front of the total pool on that side of the drive um taken into consideration? The reason I ask is because I made a mental note for every time that I was working in the area or driving by there to see how often that area was either used by taxis or anybody else. And it seems in my own anecdotal experience that it's always empty there. And um, does that, did that um if it was observed, consider uh other risks?
Deputy Ma- uh Mayor Hall, uh to answer Counsel DeBota's question. Um, we all just had observational and anecdotal experience too. We didn't do um anything that I would consider scientific. You know, um, it was a straw pool uh kind of thing, given our experience from the town and what our responsibilities are. Uh, having said that, as we considered um future options of relocation, each other option was just as problematic as what we're spacing it um for Patricia. Uh, you know, and um I don't think that reactionary um relocation of this uh is called for at this time.
That's good and I I appreciate that. And I and I am interested to see it come out of, uh, you know, the revised uh transportation master plan if if that goes, when that goes through.
Counsel Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Mr. Greathed. Um, regarding the cannot drive crosswalks, um, my recollection is there was a request to look at the crosswalks towards the one hundred block or the east side of Canot. Um, and with the addition of a new bus stop there, I don't know if we have a crosswalk that um I I can't recall if there's a new crosswalk that will allow people to have safe passage to the other side of the street. But I thought that was one of the other cannot drive locations that we were looking at uh or was requested to look at a crosswalk.
Deputy Mayor, um, to speak to Counsel, my next uh question, we did install a crosswalk down at that end. Um, and it was to accommodate the uh new transportation service that's there. So there's a crossing towards um, I believe, Experiment Lodge uh right in that area. Thank you for that.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I have questions about two of the items. Um, I'm satisfied with the the treatment of the Patricia Street bus parking zone. I think that should be referred to the transportation master plan. I agree with your suggestions that significant Bus parking zone. I think that should be referred to the transportation master plan. I agree with your suggestions that significant consultation. And um, public engagement is probably required and it's more about looking at potential options than it is at looking at the problem. No fix is going to come trouble free and that's going to be the real challenge there. But it's the other two items on the list that that caused me some concern. Um, principally the cannot crosswalks. Um, because from my perspective, there are safety issues and to say that the configuration is adequate. I think misses the issue as I understand it to be particularly at the intersection of Pine and Canot. So you referenced the bike park. But the bike park is not so much the issue as people trying to cross Canot to get to the track side and access our trail system. And from my own observation, I think this was confirmed in an earlier report that was before us, that even though we've reduced the speed limit to thirty. Nobody goes thirty. Um, and they seem to start accelerating as they're westbound out of town. Just past the lights at Hazel. So by the seven hundred and eight hundred block of Canot. They're getting ready for a highway speed, even though they have to go down a tight corner under the underpass. So they're, they're going through that crosswalk at significantly more than thirty kilometers per hour. And it's, I think, a dangerous situation. So I, I, I might have expected that there would be a suggestion of. Pedestrian activated crossing lights like we have on on the road down by Caribou Creek. Um, something to protect our, our citizens who make use of of that. Uh, I think it's more of a traffic leaving town than coming in because the the sign at the, the end of Canot that gives you your speed is quite effective in getting people to slow down. But certainly for traffic exiting, I think citizens feel exposed. Related to cannot drive crosswalks, I thought we might um get some information about. I think is a very large number of mid-block crosswalks, particularly um the one which used to be in front of the theater, which is no longer a theater. It may have been required at that time, but now that crosswalk leads to a fence on the other side. Um, and there is a crosswalk at the intersection, probably not a hundred meters away. So inviting people to cross Canot, even though the speeds are slower in the middle of a block, I'm not sure that. That aligns with the essence of safety. So I, those are, are issues in my mind that um I would prefer to see addressed sooner rather than later. Even though we could refer it all to the transportation master plan, those are. More immediate, particularly the Pine and Canot crosswalk. It seems like an immediate concern. And the other one, which was a suggestion from a member of the public about safety issues at um Hazel and Geeky. And a request for a three-way stop sign. I can understand that the committee might not have preferred that option. But I thought perhaps we could see some alternatives to extend the yellow curve around the corner. Um, both north and south on Geeky to give some better sightlines for vehicles. I'm going to say westbound on Hazel. If, from my own experience, it is very difficult from that stop sign to see what's coming. And again, I think we're inviting um a wreck of some sort. But the solution might not be a three-way stop, but it might be improving sightlines by painting some yellow curves a little further around the corners.
CEO Given.
Uh, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall. Uh, yours, I don't think administration disagrees with any of those ideas. I think the recommendation here is that those should be uh taken under consideration for implications across the municipality. So, uh, for example, the um west end of Canot, as people are exiting the townsite. Um, do we have appropriate sightlines for vehicles to be able to see a pedestrian activated light and pedestrians in the crosswalk? Do we have enough lighting across that relatively wide road for somebody to be able to see somebody in the middle of the road? Um, would we be well served by constructing physical ball boats so that a pedestrian could be out past the car? And some of these start to get into to engineering questions, which we just don't have the traffic engineering experience, expertise in-house. Um, to be able to, to really um establish a, a clear view on. And absolutely, we can put down, you know, we can put up pedestrian activated lights. Will it get, what, what impact will that be on safety? It'll be better maybe than what's there. It also may, uh. If the sightlines for the signs aren't appropriate, it may induce a false sense of security in pedestrians. Um, and so administration is suggesting again that, that these things really together. There are enough small changes all over the place that it probably suggests we should establish some standards for crosswalks that we use um in. Lower speed areas of it. Never mind that the entire townsite is supposed to be thirty kilometers per hour. Uh, but there are areas of the townsite where we know that, that people mostly travel that. Uh, maybe we have a standard for a crosswalk design there versus a standard for a crosswalk design out of Canot and um. And it's that type of sort of comprehensive approach that administration is recommending here. Um, again, recognizing that the transportation master plan is in the capital discussion uh to be determined uh through budget. Um. And so really, as I say, administration suggests that this can be done in a comprehensive, consistent manner. Um, with the appropriate amount of public engagement um on each of the issues and, and. I think we would acknowledge that on any of the issues, we could also do some small stuff sooner. Well, that would be without the benefit of analysis and uh recommendation by somebody who is a subject matter expert in that area. I mean, I, I think I'd agree with your assessment. Well, we could put some yellow lines and try to keep people from parking close to the curb. Um, on that intersection of Hazel and uh Geeky, that, that might work. Or might not. Um, and I certainly wouldn't want to cause any additional. Create any additional risk or unintended consequences when, to my knowledge, while it's a state of my knowledge, maybe anybody else on the table has longer of the community. I don't know that we've had any incidents at that intersection to date. So while it may not provide motorists with a good sense of comfort and I have experienced that myself as well. Um, I also would say that we don't have any evidence that it has caused any wrecks in the time that it's existed in its current state. So. I certainly am not saying if it isn't broke, don't fix it, but I am saying proceed cautiously with changes. Ac- active steps to make changes when you haven't seen any evidence that there's. A risk.
Council Waxer.
That, that uh committee, uh, that the committee of the whole extend the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting beyond the four hours.
Oh, boy.
I may be opposed.
Council might be opposed or friendly.
There was a bit of a glaze going on there. I wonder if there was like palm trees in the glasses and the reflection there is like.
Hey, there is a motion to extend the meeting past four hours. All in favor. Okay, um, uh, Council Keller.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Um. Yes, I just, I agree with Mayor Ireland. Um, I travel in and out of town probably twenty times a day. And when I'm legal town, um, Pine and Canot, it's a very difficult crosswalk. I'm aware, because I'm local, that people cross there all the time with their dogs over the trail and come on the other way. It's easier. What I find is. Through winter and um at this time of year, the um pedestrian crossing, the, it's gone. The paint is gone. There's absolutely nothing there indicating it's a crossing when the cars and the trucks are parked. We don't even see the sign. So I think, you know, I understand that it should be part of the master plan, it should be part of. But to make it say temporary, I'm wondering, like, if you could put in a solar light, like a pedestrian solar light or crossing there. But it is, you know, downtown, you see the pedestrian crossings as you go, you see one down by the lights, right? But when you go past the uh housing there and then suddenly just before the Mount Robson, like, people are trying to get across there. It is very dangerous and think that, you know, we don't know how long the transportation master plan will take to go into another summer. Being that wide open, even during winter, it's dangerous. And I think, you know, we've seen, even if we put up a stop sign, like, see them out here, like, in front of the um. Activity center where we put up temporary stop sign, maybe that's what we do, just to keep that area safe.
Thank you, Council Keller. I do agree on that one. That is my end of town and I'm always crossing that crosswalk. It is the last crosswalk leaving on Canot as well. Um, when I would be coaching uh kids mountain biking, it would be. We'd have to parent in the middle of the road, very, very much directing traffic. Um, I'm not sure what a solution would be, but I do think that is a bit of a, a problem area that, that crosswalk it is. You sort of have to be in the street for cars to see you and they are speeding up because they're heading out of. Deputy Greyhead.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hall, just to um add a little bit of context down here, when we were reviewing it and we're pulling it out since seeing where crosswalks are. Are viewing our previous transportation master plan that was presented but not accepted as uh by council. That the, the old plan uh suggested a number of deletions of the crosswalks. And currently we have twenty crosswalks along Canot uh with no minimum standard or span of where they should be. Um, so you know, I've always felt at the traffic advisory committee level that, 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 that intersection is close enough. Do we add another one? Do we add another twenty first uh crosswalk on Canot? Um, while we were comparing Banff, which Banff Avenue is a lot longer and it has only has seventeen crosswalks along that entire. Um, if anything, uh, we do feel that, you know, the crosswalk should be uh more standardized and uh, you know, lessened uh during. Or uh, in the area of the downtown business core.
Council Devota.
Well, these conversations are great and I think at one point we did get, um, when we, we did get a lit crosswalk area. And we have an understanding of how much one of those costs. Um, I just sent a picture um that I took when I was in Banff of a very similar area. As you're leaving the downtown core, where vehicles start to speed up, it's a similar setup, except opposite. Uh, I took a picture of the flashing lane, someone crossing it. It is quite visible once, once those red lights are going. But there is a bunch of dairy costs to contemplating these regardless of we get expertise. Um, you know, a, a little bit more of an expert opinion involved. If we paid for that, that's gonna, that's gonna cost extra too. And on top of the, the master plan, if we decide to go that route, um, Mr. Greathed is right, I mean. And then same thing with the mayor, if we're going to look at, you know, the, the overall um crosswalk. Uh, situation across Canot, I mean, there could be areas where we can enhance it and then there are areas we could probably take away one or two. But uh, I, I definitely think that safety is important and, you know, another question could be like, what are we doing to mitigate? Graphic slowing down in that section from Hazel to Pine. Because it, even by where the residential starts, just after the gas station there in that direction. People are building up quite a bit of speed. And again, that's, that's anecdotal, but um. You know, there, there's no flashing sign for way through to, to slow people down. There's no speed bumps. There's, there's nothing really that are, you know, uh. There isn't really anything to remind people that you shouldn't be going fifty there.
Deputy Greyhead.
Uh, just about um the speed and those radar signs. So those radar signs that we have, we're actually deploying now and I gathering some traffic data. It's providing some vehicle counts, it's providing top speeds, uh, a number of speeders on average by side. So we're getting that data. Our intent is, um, we activated those and we're capture capturing data since April of last year. We wanted to go a full year and get our, get an understanding and use that as baseline. And then start redeploying them strategically, just to see if we can make any changes. We totally, um, our intent was to leave the couple mile markers at the ends of Canot. But then see if we shift them around, see if that changes any uh behavior. So we had had the consideration of that, but again, our, our, our intent on using those signs. So we wanted to collect eight years worth of data, um, see what the seasonal norms are, see what the impact of uh tourist season is.
You recall, um, sorry if I may, um, off the top of your head, how much one of those signs cost? Just the, the ones that monitor the speed?
Um, a base model is about forty seven hundred dollars.
Okay, well, I, it would be interesting to see the uh, some of the evidence that's collected on like our way down that stretch. I think, what is it? The seven hundred block, seventy, eight hundred block of uh Canot? I'm willing to defer uh the um money that I, I brought forward for the studded bike program for that. Forty seven hundred bucks, so.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I just returned to the. The crosswalk, Pine and Canot, um. I admit readily that I have no expertise in this subject area and we would always benefit from. From those who are um better equipped to deal with these issues. I had contemplated the possibility of pedestrian activated lights that comes with a cost. But I wondered, looking again at, at the reasoning, um, you've indicated that the current configuration and locations are adequate, but. The issue, as I understand it to be, is westbound traffic increasing speed for ladies town, which is a danger for those who are crossing from north to south. The crosswalk happens to be on the east side of the intersection where sightlines are worse. If that same crosswalk, and it's worn out anyway, so it has to be repainted, was moved to the west side, so on the corner of Mount Robson. That would at least improve sightlines for people waiting to cross. They've got an entire, the entire width of Pine. Um, with an unobstructed view for westbound traffic on. The north side lanes of, of Canot. It goes to the same place on the other side and the incoming traffic is not the same concern because. Sightlines are good. And so the expense would be limited potentially to moving the pedestrian sign. Um, so we'd have to put some bolts in the concrete somewhere, I guess, and move the sign. But it seems like a fairly inexpensive temporary fix while we look at the overall plan. And referring back to Mr. Given's earlier comments. Yes, there hasn't been a serious accident yet, but there wasn't yet a serious accident with dogging. And we made a lot of changes. Um, why would we not um do something which? I think it would be inconceivable to suggest it would make things worse. It might make things safer. Um, and it would be at relatively no cost. Again, I'm not an expert, but would there be a, a reasoning against moving that crosswalk from east to west?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hall to uh speak to uh Mayor on this question. Yeah, I hadn't considered that. I think that's an easy pick.
They're claiming not to be an expert. That was a very good idea. Any other questions or Dr. Greyhead, uh, Council Waxer?
Uh, I believe I was one of the people who spoke about the uh, about the Canot Street in the downtown core. And, and the fact that there's so many crosswalks and that uh the uh store, the people working in that area. Would have approached me on candidate day to, to bring it forward to council. Just, so I just wanted to again reiterate. Just, so I just wanted to, again, reiterate their concerns that, that they are observing on a regular basis. Some, some real near misses, and particularly of the one at the crosswalk in front of Baxter's, where they may have just stopped at the previous one and see their chance to go and go. And there's so many people coming from the train station, so I just felt I would be remiss in not reminding the concerns that were expressed by the people working in that area.
Thank you, Council Waxer. Or any more comments or questions, or a motion? Mayor Ireland?
Carrying the water, yeah, heavy lifting.
I will take this stab at it, um, I will roll three motions into one, and people can ask for division if they want. Um, firstly, that committee receive the report for information. Secondly, that committee refer all items in the current report to an update in the transportation master plan. And thirdly, that committee direct administration to take steps to improve safety at the Canot Pine intersection by moving the crosswalk on the east side of Pine to the west side of Pine. East side, east to west.
Thank you for your motion, Mayor Ireland. Is there any debate on the motion? And does administration have the motion? I also scrolled it down quickly, put me to repeat it. Seeing no debate, I will call the question, all in favor, and there are none opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you very much, Director Grayhead, for your report this morning, this afternoon. Okay, one more, gonna go for it. You need a break? I feel we're gonna, we're gonna go for it, we're gonna move on to agenda item seven point five. Uh, the Jasper Hakone Committee, I believe CAO Given will be taking this one.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall, so, uh, as council knows, uh, in October of this year, Committee of the Whole Meeting, uh, Committee Director Administration to draft terms of reference, uh, to establish a clear focus on the Jasper Hakone relationship. Um, and then to return, um, to a future Committee of the Whole Meeting. Um, this is all under policy B dash zero one nine, twinning sister city relationship, uh, it was approved by council in twenty twelve. Um, the policy establishes a twinning committee, established comprised of two counselors. And obviously, the focus of the municipality's twinning relationships really has been almost exclusively on the Hakone relationship, uh, other than a small amount of time where, uh, there was this, uh, short connection with Wickenberg, Arizona. Um, so administration has, uh, made some effort to draft up a terms of reference to ensure that we're in compliance with the, the policy, which does suggest that we should have a, a committee. Um, as I say, the focus of this committee is on the Jasper Hakone, uh, relationship. Um, and you can see the attached terms of reference, which I think are pretty straightforward. Um, there was some discussion at council previously about, uh, whether there should be the opportunity to invite members of the public to sit on the committee, um, if council wished to make a change to the proposed terms of reference, that would be under, uh, item two, membership. Uh, certainly, administration is open to that, or whatever direction council would like to give, but we want to give you a platform to work from and to amend. Uh, at a high level, we believe that this addresses the, the major items that council had asked for. Um, specifically focusing on the committee's attention on delegations to and from Hakone, uh, the high school student exchange program, and, uh, reviewing the annual operating budget allocation to support the relationship. Administration is happy to take any direction, uh, from council on this issue. The other thing that I would raise is that it may be, and you'll see this as the secondary recommendation, uh, that committee refer the matter of B zero one nine, twinning sister city relationships to the strategic planning session in the new year. The, uh, policy itself is very broad in nature, uh, has been a significant amount of time since it's been passed, and council may wish to review it and reevaluate its relevance against council's established strategic priorities and longer-term objectives. And administration is recommending this rather than the regular policy review process, because there may be some other strategic priorities that council would want to, um, uh, have an open dialogue about where you put your relative effort and priority. Um, and some of that may be better and more appropriately suited to strategic planning session. Um, and so that's why that secondary recommendation, so really continuing the Hakone uh, progress moving forward by establishing a committee. Uh, terms of reference are here for your, uh, support or adjustment as needed. And then that secondary recommendation that we should maybe reconsider that policy that is very, very broad, and if it's uh, still relevant or not.
Thank you, CAO Given. I'll open the floor to comments or questions from council. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. On our agenda, on the request for decision, there is a link to both the current, um, policy and the administrative procedures, but it will not open on, on my machine, and I just want confirmation from Mr. Given, uh, whether there are any changes contemplated to the administrative procedures.
Uh, Your Worship, no, we really, uh, were just focused on that committee. Uh, the, the policy itself, I believe, calls for the establishment of the committee, we're out of compliance with the policy, and so this'll, um, bring us more in compliance to establish a committee and have that clear focus, uh, again, in line with council's direction. I think any other changes would be subject to council's review of the policy itself and the intent in a strategic session.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for CAO Given regarding the committee? If there aren't any questions, I'm wondering if there is someone would like to make a motion. Wait, I, is eye contact a hand raising? Council Waxer?
Committee member.
Yes, the committee recommend council approve the Jasper Hakone Committee Terms of Reference as presented. And that committee refer the matter of B zero one nine, twinning sister city relationships to the twenty twenty-four strategic planning session.
Thank you very much, Council Waxer. There is a motion on the table. Is there any debate on that motion? I see no hands, I will call the question, all in favor. There are none opposed, and that motion is carried. Moving along to agenda item eight, our motion action list. I'll pass it over to CAO Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall, so, uh, there are a number of changes to recommend, uh, to council today. First, and this is a collection of items through the list, uh, there was a number of items that were addressed in the Traffic Advisory Committee uh, report and recommendations, uh, of course, there was, uh, some further direction on one specific. Um, the Canot Drive Crosswalks, Bus Parking Zone, Stop Sign at Intersection of Hazel and Geeky, um, could all be removed, um, that were addressed, certainly administration won't lose them as items that should be addressed in a transportation master plan, uh, review, but we'd recommend they could come off the motion action list. The trans, active transportation feasibility study, um, is another one that could be removed. Um, but there is also the, um, discussion about opportunities to enhance winter cycling is the, the main part that's left there. I don't know if council is satisfied, um, that that has been discussed, I don't know if it was directly related to the concept of, um, um, a bike tire program, uh, if it wasn't, then maybe it could remain. Um, the land acknowledgement policy item, uh, could be removed, was brought forward today, there's some action on that. The Hakone Japan Initiatives, the first part of that motion that dealt with the terms of reference can be removed. The community and economic development fund policy can be removed, again, that was dealt with today. Uh, and the transit levels of service, uh, council requested information to come to budget discussions, if it has, uh, council may have given some direction on that, so it could also be removed. So those are the ones that could be removed from administration's perspective. The other items, uh, in terms of updates would be behavior in municipal facilities policy, I think we've got November there, obviously, we're running out of November pretty rapidly, uh, and so I think probably best to say that that would actually be a January twenty twenty-four item. The childcare advocacy, again, a January twenty twenty-four item. And, uh, the forest park, uh, parking, that would be a December twenty twenty-four, Director Grayhead and I, uh, still need to meet with uh, the forest park to discuss their opportunities that they saw to work together. Um, they were also, can report that the chamber, I've spoken with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, about this, and they were also looking for that longer-term information about what will happen at that end of town. We do have some designs with respect to the newer CMP location, how it will impact the accesses in that area, and what curb frontage is available for parking, so we have more to talk about with them, um, but it is not complete, uh, and so we suggest that one could be December.
Thank you, CAO Given, Councilor DeMota?
I guess, I, I think one of the questions to, to council was, um, if addressing the, um, Studded Tire Program within the Act of Transportation, uh, it's um, satisfy that, so that we can remove it, and I think so. Was that the question?
I think, I think so. Mayor Ireland, do you want, want to speak to that?
I do, yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and I do not think it captured it of my recollection, and I stand to be corrected, is that I made a motion um, worded enhancing winter cycling options, with the intent of looking at our bylaw to allow individuals in residential areas to, um, cycle in the winter on cleared sidewalks rather than risk their, their lives on our roads or take a car instead. Um, and so I, I don't think that is addressed by the Studded Tire Program, um, and it, it doesn't need to be resolved immediately, but I don't want to see that removed. I think council should address whether there are other opportunities to enhance winter cycling in the community.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland, that's how I, I remember it as well, it's a conversation, uh, Councilor Keller-Emby.
Thank you, Deputy, uh, just a question for Mr. Given, would that be considered of the transportation master plan, the winter cycling?
It is the kind of item that could be discussed there, I, I think, uh, transportation master plan should review and consider physical improvements, legislative improvements, regulations, regulatory changes. Um, and if, uh, similar to one of the other items that was on here, if council wished to have there be earlier actions, some clarity would be helpful, and so maybe the change here would be to specify what type of support for winter cycling council's meeting, and that kind of update could be made to the motion action list here.
Thank you for that. We would, uh, Mayor Ireland, would you like to update that, was your motion originally?
If you will give me a moment, I will try, I, I think I had it more specific the first time around, and I was encouraged to make it more general, um, to allow more latitude for administration to come back with different options. I, I need a moment of time to, to reword that.
While you are doing that, I have a question about, uh, the heat parking correspondence that was directly from a resident regarding, I think, just out in front of us on Geeky Street, Wicked Residential Parking and I mean, possibly Motorhomes Parking in the, the spaces in front, would, will that come to us? Will we discuss that next week on the fifth, or is that gonna be a different time for conversa, for that conversation?
Deputy Mayor Hall, that would, uh, come back as a result of the year-end review of the heat parking program, and that won't be next week. Um, and so Director Nodon and Director Malinchuk, uh, would be bringing that back to say, here's what happened in twenty twenty-three. Um, and here are some of the feedback that we got from residents and potential program changes.
Councilor DeMota?
Also, while we're waiting, because you brought it up, um, when we do get there, I wanted to talk about the parking that's directly, um, in front of Nesters, the grocery store, not on the Canot side, but on the, on the other side of the street, is that birch there? Um, just because I, I don't think that there was any, um, designated time or anything in that area, and, and I saw that a lot of, um, people were finding that as, uh, visitors were finding that as a loophole for parking in downtown, so I don't know if that's fair to the business there, or or locals that are going to shop, so it's just something to look at, um. And I just brought that up as a little time filler here for when we do discuss it, and just in case I forgot about it.
Thank you, Councilor DeMota. How we doing, Mayor Ireland?
I am looking for, I am looking for, I think it's it? Mr. Grayhead, you might be able to assist me, is it our traffic safety bylaw, which, um, is the document that describes where bicycles may and may not operate and skateboards and scooters and, and all the rest of it is, is, but under that bylaw? I can't imagine what other bylaws under.
Your, Your Worship, I believe it is, uh, you could just say, bring back amendments to the appropriate bylaw.
I can say that, yeah, um, all right, if I can, get back to my agenda. So my motion would be that committee direct administration to bring forward recommendations to enhance winter cycling options through amendments to the relevant municipal bylaws.
Thank you for your motion, there is a motion on the table, is there any debate on the motion? And does administration have the motion? Excellent, um, I will call the question, all in favor. There are none opposed, and that is carried. Council, is there anything else regarding the motion action list, Mayor Ireland?
I just, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, I just want to confirm two items, I think, um, the transit levels of service, is that just a, a misstatement? It was to return in November twenty twenty-four, it says, so we just dealt with it, but was there an intent that we deal with it annually, and that's to be removed, or we dealt with it a week ago, and so?
Your Worship, I think that's just a title, or a sort of typo.
All right, and again, the Forest Park, Forest Park Hotel Parking is slated as November twenty twenty-four, and that's a misprint, and it was November of this year, but you're suggesting December of this year?
Yes, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Councilor, everybody. Council, oh gee, oh, that's cutting me out too, Councilor DeMota?
With those clarified corrections, I move the committee approve. With those clarified corrections, I move the committee approve the updated motion action list.
There is a motion on the table. I'm not asking for debate. Everything. All in favor? There are none opposed, and that is carried. And then item nine, counselor, upcoming meetings. Is there anything to report on council? Please. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I will try to be brief. We've had a busy couple of weeks with council meetings, but during the couple of weeks, on Tuesday, the fourteenth, we attended, I attended a Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society meeting, followed a couple of days later by a Zoom call with the Alberta Japan Twin Cities Committee. Following week, while we were enjoying our, our budget deliberations, had an opportunity to do some community futures with Yellowhead Training one evening on the twenty first, plus we had our board meeting and strut, planning session with community futures on November twenty fourth. And with that, it still continues to be a busy week for us here. We have a community housing corporation meeting on Thursday. And then there was an invitation from Alberta Union for elected officials to participate on a conference call. And with that, that was a week that was, or two.
One week with the amount of stuff for two weeks packed into one week? Any other, I, Counselor Keller, happy.
Last Friday, I attended Prince Kennedy Waterhead Highway Association meeting, and next week, December seventh and eighth, I will be in Hinton with Evergreen meetings. And on December sixth next week, it's the road relaunching for the seniors that I will be in attendance. Thank you, Counselor Keller, happy. Anything else to report?
Counselor Demota?
Not from any other committee, but this one, I just, the mayor is actually wearing a necktie today and a vest of his place, so I just thought that was important to point out. Because, you know, these things are important.
You got to dress for the job you want, Counselor Demota.
There's a bull tag, I mean.
There any other reports from council? Mayor Ireland?
I will observe that because we've talked so much about the the importance of what we have so far called the nonprofit sector in our community. Today is in fact giving to see. So if you are so inclined to support any of those entities that give back to the community, today is a very appropriate, appropriate day to do so.
Thank you for that. No other reports to report on. Move on to agenda item ten, upcoming events. The Chamber, Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Christmas party is this Friday at five thirty at the Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge. Our community Christmas party, holiday party, community holiday party, December fifteenth at the Jasper Activity Center. And Netma from four till seven on Wednesday, December twentieth, at the Robson House Patricia Street. There is also, for those interested who want to watch the municipality of Jasper defeat the Parks hockey team, the rivalry, I'm going to put some money on it, that is on the fourteenth of December from one thirty till three o'clock at the arena. Any other upcoming events that I may have missed? Counselor Melnick?
I believe that Friday, we'll have the lighting of the World Tree event. I believe that starts at about four o'clock. Counselor Waxer will be in attendance, I believe.
Stirring hot dogs.
I thought it was the first in my calendar.
Thought it was the eighth.
I also think it's the eighth. However, there could be a couple.
Somebody check our website.
Yes. It is in my calendar as the eighth, but I could be wrong.
I don't think I got an invitation and conflicted them at the Fireman's Christmas party, which is the eighth, is the chamber, is this one?
Mayor Hall, on our municipal website, it reports the World Tree lighting is on December eighth at six PM, six to eight PM, Roshan Park.
Okay, thank you for that, CAO Given.
Okay, my apology.
Still an important day, and I would hope to see the entire community there. Planting a tree. Is there any other upcoming events? Then I am looking for somebody to make an emotion for adjournment. Counselor Keller, I'm sure you get you to it. Any debate on the motion? I'm just kidding. All in favor? And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for watching our residents on Zoom and council have a wonderful rest of your Tuesday.